Do you want to?
I would just chat with.
Do you?
Superintendent Accar? Superintendent Accar, so can we start?
Okay.
Ms. Ms. Lemos, can we start?
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The board has just returned from closed session and we have no action to report. Student Board Member Jesline Torres, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Member Hill, would you please read our meeting practices and information? Oh, you want? Okay. It's your turn. I thought it was Member Hill's turn, sorry.
Board meeting guidelines: We will keep our focus on the best interests of our students. We will look towards the future, learning from the past. We will stay focused on our goals and avoid getting sidetracked. We will build upon ideas of others and look for common ground. We will paraphrase for understanding. When we have differences, when we have a difference of opinion, we will debate the facts of the situation and avoid personal criticism. We will address processes, not persons. We will respect differences. We will never dismiss or devalue others.
Thank you, Member Anguiano. And next, we move to the approval of the agenda. Is there any staff or board member that wishes to either pull any or change any agenda items? Superintendent?
Thank you. I appreciate that. We would like to be able to move item number 11.1, which is a staff presentation on HVAC, 12.1, which is a resolution, and 12.2, which is a contract for the HVAC services, forward, and we would like to move that after the BGI school presentation.
And and not?
And the reason for this, we have our, we have our attorney here with us here this evening.
I thought we spoke earlier about doing it now.
Oh, I'm sorry. If we could pull it up now, that would be great.
So that they don't have to sit for a while, okay?
That would be great. I would appreciate that.
And was there an item you wanted to pull?
And there's 12.3 we were pulling.
Pull 12 for three. I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with those changes.
I'll move to accept the agenda with the changes just discussed.
I second that.
Okay. Please vote. Came on. Okay, we have five ayes. Member Jones is missing. Thank you. So next, we move on to 11.1, which is the HVAC update.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce two of our staff members. I'd like to introduce Travis DeFridis and Mr. Antonio Lopez, who is our procurement manager, to come forward and do information with you regarding our HVAC systems and some of the failures that we've had with them that we've been discussing for the last couple of years.
So light on it, so.
I'm just gonna introduce myself. Good evening, board and staff. Very happy to be here and be part of what's going on in Newark and look forward to getting started with this project and getting the services into the sites and schools that they deserve. Thank you.
All right. So, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us the time to kind of give a quick update on HVAC. I want to kind of go back and kind of explain how we got here to the HVAC issues that we're having and kind of dive in a little bit into the repair that we're proposing. So, back in 2010 is when we signed contracts and implemented Sizerco system. Sizerco system is an energy-efficient system that is, I hate to say it, but rarely used, and is a thermostat replacement for HVAC. To date, we've spent $472,860 on the contract and multiple repairs since 2010. Since I've started, it's been nothing but a nightmare. We've had nothing but issues with this system. As everybody knows, HVAC is a big concern within this district. As we believe, we've had two mechanical engineer companies come in and take a look at it since I've started. It seems that the controls is not controlling the HVAC system itself. The thermostat goes and wires up into two different boards that allows the kind of energy-efficient part of it to work prior to, prior to it making the controls connect to the system itself. Since then, we've replaced, I have the exact rooms here, I want to say six rooms. One, two, three, four, yep, six rooms. One at Kennedy, two at Newark Memorial High School, and three at BGP with Pelican thermostats. We did that shortly after I started, after we got a quote from Sizerco for $2,500 to come out and assess broken units. We believed that it was a controls issue. They believed it was a controls issue. They quoted us $2,500 to come out and replace the thermostat, to work on the thermostat. Instead of going that route, we went and replaced the thermostats. Since then, those six rooms have been operating and probably the only six HVAC units that are working within the district. The issues that we've had since then, we've had six Williams complaints. That was as of this morning. I believe there's one more that's come through since then. We have two OSHA complaints that have been filed, one on Kennedy Elementary School, one at Newark Memorial, Newark Middle School. The complaints have a couple of different things on it, but are mainly focused on HVAC issues. Since then, since we've filed a response with OSHA, their recommendation is to bring in a temporary unit, since majority of our units are not operating correctly. We've brought in 20 units at Kennedy, temporary AC units, costing the district $12,778 per month for those units. I got a response from OSHA yesterday saying that we need to do the same thing at the middle school. We brought in 50 units for the middle school, $43,290 per month that we are paying to have these HVAC units that is required by OSHA to get some AC going in these rooms. A lot of these rooms, we've been monitoring. We're not having any response on the thermostats. We've had our mechanical company come out and test the units themselves. Majority of the units are working just fine. I don't want to say that that's our sole issue because there are some units that need some repair, but our biggest issue are the thermostats and the controls. Based off the six units that we've tested and did this kind of trial run, those ones are working just fine and seem to be the best repair that we can do to get these units working. You want to jump into CalShape? Do you want us to jump into CalShape?
Or another item?
Can we tackle all of it at once? So as I mentioned in the past, we went out for an RFP in, I'm all mixed up here, was it June? June 2025 is our first advertisement app, went out for RFP for CalShape. CalShape allocates certain funds for certain repairs that need to be done. First is CO2 sensors that are required, now required in all classrooms. All of our classrooms do not have CO2 sensors. So with that part of the CalShape grant, they allocate $600 per CO2 sensor to be installed in each classroom. So the option is, if we go through the CalShape grant, they will add a secondary, I don't want to say thermostat, but secondary type of unit, like a thermostat, that is solely just a CO2 sensor. So that would, that's what's part of the CalShape grant. With what we're proposing, that $600 per CO2 sensor goes into this Pelican thermostat that actually has a CO2 sensor in it. So we're technically using the $600 that's allocated for the CO2 sensors towards not just a CO2 sensor, but also for a thermostat as well. With that, obviously, CalShape has other things. We're going to be getting another filter replacement. They're going to be going through and testing all the units. There's a whole list of other things that CalShape does for us as well. Something I'd like to mention, $1.1 million is what was awarded to us from the CalShape grant. Back in June, the board, you, the board, allocated our priority list. Something I want to mention is on that list is thermostat replacements, which we have known for a bit that has been an issue. What we allocated on that was $2.5 million. What we allocated on that was $2.5 million for HVAC controls. With what we're proposing.
I believe it was HVAC repairs.
HVAC repairs.
Yeah, which should also include the controls.
Which also include the controls. With going the route that we are proposing is, is it the $500?
It is. The emergency contracts were $700.
$777,287 to replace all the thermostats. As I mentioned, it is, that is including the $600 per CO2 sensor going towards these thermostats as well.
I can speak to a little bit about, just for clarity. So, by doing this, all of our thermostats will be the Pelican thermostats with the CO2 sensor in them. So, there's a lot of cost savings there because Travis and his team aren't trying to maintain multiple systems. And they'll have one system baseline to maintain. And then that'll be a good baseline to figure out which HVAC units are actually having problems or not. Is it the thermostat or not? So that's another cost savings as well. So we're bringing the resolution here tonight to, because this is an emergency throughout the school district. We've got students and staff who don't have air. And here soon, we're going to need heat. So we've already identified that it's a, the majority of it is a thermostat problem. And so along with the CalShape grant that was awarded through the RFP, along with this emergency resolution, we're really fast-tracking the services that we'll be able to provide to in buildings.
One thing I wanted to mention is currently, we have 163 units district-wide that are not corresponding. They're not turning on at all. And yes, we've known about this issue for quite some time, that there's been an HVAC issue. But at the start of the school is when it dramatically escalated. End of last school year, we had them somewhat functioning. And we were hoping to kind of get through this CalShape grant and then assess the major issue that we have. But since school has started, we have 163 units that are not responding. We've had our companies come out and take a look at it. And all we're being told is, it is a controls issue.
I wasn't sure if there's any questions or anything that needed to be added.
Member Hill?
So gentlemen, thank you for the presentation. But I can't tell you how angry this whole situation makes me. So ever since I've been on the board, right? And so I'm now going into my sixth year. We have had HVAC issues, okay? So this is not new. This is not an emergency. The same things that you guys are describing were described to me when we had, as we went through a whole process of updating our HVAC during COVID. And we had another general contractor that was supervising all this. And we would have multiple presentations talking about, oh yes, this is going to work, and yes, we're going to need this, and we need air ionizers, and a lot of this anecdotal information. And then we would find out stuff that was promised. It actually wasn't the issue. We had to go scrap a million dollars in air ionizers. Initially, this was the, was the solution, right? We found out actually that they didn't even work. And there was some kind of, you know, national recall on it. And, but what I'm telling you is that we have had HVAC issues, at least for the past six years, with new systems, okay? And every single year, at, in the beginning when school starts, there's issues in the classroom, teachers are sweating, kids are sweating. And it happens every year. So this is not new, okay? It's not an emergency. Now, what I want to say is, just because it's not an emergency doesn't mean it's not important, right? It's very important. And what I've seen so far over my past six years is that we have wasted millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, and we still have a non-functional system. And it seems like we take a patchwork approach. We do not take a holistic approach. And it's like, oh, well, let's try this, oh, let's try this. And, and yet, the, the, the outcome is the same. And so, and it is very unfortunate for the teachers and for the kids to have to put up with this, right? And it impacts them. But let's not exaggerate what's going on, okay? We live in California, all right? We do not live in Arizona, where the average daily temperature in the summer is 120 degrees. We don't live in Alaska, where in the winter, it's probably below zero, okay? And so, and we don't have anybody, knock on wood, at this point, passing out and dying. And so, let's not try to exaggerate and manufacture an emergency where there isn't one. And I think that we, we need to be very sensitive to this. And I don't want to get into politics, but I think if people look at what's going on in our society right now, there's lots of invoking of emergencies. And I think that you always need to be very careful when you start to invoke an emergency. And I, and I think the question that we need to be asking ourselves is, well, so what are we going to get if we invoke an emergency? So, are we going to now start sole sourcing contracts? I don't think that's a good idea, right? I mean, I have, right now, you've come up and explained things to me, and I don't have one piece of paper in front of me that documents anything of what you've said. I've just heard anecdotal, anecdotal things, sensor this, you know, controller this, thing, this thing is not working, right? I would expect for this level of a problem that we would have a professional presentation and a professional analysis, right? And we don't have that, right? And so, and yet, we're being asked to spend a whole bunch of money on stuff. And I don't even have confidence that this has been looked at in a holistic sense. And you need to understand that the, you know, that, that in my position, after having had multiple vendors and multiple people tell me, okay, this is the issue, and we're going to solve it, and that it doesn't get solved, you've got to understand why I'm a doubting Thomas, and no offense to our president here, our vice president here. And so, and, and even if we did say emergency powers, right? Oh my God, you know, this is, yeah, we, we've got to, we've got to invoke an emergency, and we've got to immediately sole source this stuff. How is that going to fast-track anything of what we already need to do, right? And so, and I'm, and, and by the way, I have significant experience in purchasing. I have formal training in purchasing, and I have 25 years of experience in purchasing. And I will tell you that the way that you get the best solution is through a competitive bidding process and bringing in the best people to come forward and really come in and do an analysis.
Could you wrap this up?
And so I, and so I will wrap it up, I will wrap it up by saying that, that we, that before we do anything, we need to have a real analysis, because we've done this CalShape grant. And so, and part of that is an assessment. And I'm thinking that we need to have a complete assessment of exactly what's going on before we authorize any further work. That's my two cents.
Member, uh, Member Anguiano or Member Block?
Mr. DeFridas, thank you for the presentation also, Mr. Lopez. Question in regards to, out of the 163 units that are currently down, how many of these are portables? How many of these are standing classrooms?
These are all standing classrooms.
There are also no portable issues?
Portables are not on any of these systems.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that the Pelican units, they are both a thermostat and also CO2. They, they carry the sensor. All of the units that you mentioned, what was it, a total of six? Six rooms that?
That we installed, yeah, last school year, yes.
So they're functioning correctly?
Correct.
There's no issues with them?
No issues.
And it's wired directly to the Pelican? From these particular units that we're talking about, you're, you talked about the 20 units and costing us $12,000 for the filter system, right? For the?
For temporary.
The temporary filter?
Yeah, so currently, at Kennedy Elementary School, we're paying $12,778 for temporary units per month. At the middle school, we are paying $43,290 per month.
And how many units?
Those are 50 units at the middle school that were delivered and installed today. And there were, I want to say 15 to 20 at Kennedy, installed. We just got our, our bill, so, a month ago.
Now, the current controls that we're utilizing that, that these particular rooms have, are there Honeywell, Delta controls?
Sizerco, currently.
All of them?
On our existing units, yes.
Okay.
There's actually two different control systems. Is there not a carrier system as well?
No, carrier is the HVAC.
Is the HVAC system itself, and it has a?
A Sizerco thermostat that, that controls the unit itself. So to give you an idea, we can go up to a unit, which we've done to Kennedy and the middle school, and we can jump out the unit. It's just hardwiring those street units to blow AC, which we've done to get some airflow going, because the rooms were hot in the past few weeks. And the units work, 99% of the units work just fine.
So in the near future, we're talking about winter coming around. We have ACs and heating units. Is that going to work?
The temporary units?
No, the, the actual units themselves.
Correct, the actual units themselves, if the thermostats are replaced, they will work. Not, like I said, I don't want to say 100% they will work, because there are a few units that haven't been looked at and probably need some, some sort of general maintenance done on them. But 99% of the ones that we've looked at are control issues.
Okay. In regards to the, the mechanical contractors that, that we've gotten, the appraisers that we've received, the information, have we compared in between the two different mechanical contractors? The information that's, that's being said, that's?
That it's a controls issue? So, so the mechanical company that we had in place prior to me starting and, and as I started, we had them assess a few units here and there. The issue that we were having, and, and I, it seems like this was an ongoing issue, is a thermostat or an HVAC unit is not working. Somebody put to work order in. A teacher put to work order in for HVAC not blowing cold or hot, whatever the case is. We will call an HVAC company, that's a mechanical company, to come out, assess the unit, and they, 99% of the time, say the unit works just fine. It's the controls. So then we reach out to Sizerco and we say, hey, we're having problems with the controls. They'll log in, everything seems to be working on their computer. That's when the $2,500 per day for them to come out and assess the unit comes into place. It's been a couple of cases where they've, we've spent $2,500 for them to assess the controls with no actual repair.
We're talking about emergency, right? Using emergency funds for, for this particular project?
Not emergency funds. We're using, was already pre-planned, which was using?
Bond.
The bond money for our Mejero. So that was already planned, like when you guys gave us the $40 million. One of the elements that we were working on was for HVAC repairs, which also included the control systems. So we've actually been planning to move in this direction. I think the failure came when we had so much trouble here at the beginning in the fall on those exceptionally hot dates. And the number of units that are currently failing. And even to bring Sizerco back out at $2,500 a pop, the thing is, it could be down the very next week again. And that was what we were experiencing last year. When we took the move to try out the various units with using the Pelican system last year, you could say we took a chance, but nothing else was working. And we both have had a good experience in the past with having worked with the Pelican systems. And lo and behold, they're actually working. Those are the ones that are actually standing up and are able to actually work. We feel confident that this is the right way to go. I know, Member Hill, you don't believe this is an emergency, but for our end, when you're a small staff and you're trying to work and support as many classrooms to have a comfort level, and then you've got Cal-OSHA, to me, it's escalated to the level of an emergency-type level and not just the standard business, which really was where we were going towards as we were, you know, moving forward with our bond proceeds that we received. We had planned to go out for an RFP. The RFP was pretty much so done and ready to go before we received the Cal-OSHA concerns that came forward, and then the mandate that we had to put in the temporary units. And then when you look at the cost of the temporary units over a period of a few months, it really starts to entrench into the overall work with, you still don't have actual working units. You're still using the temporary units. As a team, we felt it was beneficial to come back to you and ask you to consider the emergency resolution so that we could break relief to the classrooms and actually move forward.
Can, can we have Member Block and myself be able to ask some questions? Then we can come back to more questions from you, or you, if you'd like.
Thank you. So I guess I'm just curious to learn a little bit more about what exactly Cal-OSHA has said. Because if, if Cal-OSHA is declaring it as an emergency, then that seems to, that seems to influence this conversation a lot. So I'm just curious about what Cal-OSHA's findings exactly were, what the exact mandate has been that they've implemented, and if we could just get a little bit more information about how, how that whole process went.
Yeah, so I, I apologize, I don't have the set points, and maybe Tracy might know. But as far as legally, we need to have the rooms between, I want to say, is it 65 to 70 degrees?
They have, they have a range of?
And I apologize, I don't have that.
Of about eight degrees of which you have to have your room temperatures at. And we've not been able to meet that ability. Even if we bypassed the system and just brought in straight cold air, it became colder than with the lowest temperature was.
Which is the issue that we have. We jumped out quite a few units, and then the rooms became too cold. Because there's not one, somebody standing there with the thermostat and telling you, hey, these units reach a satisfactory of the temperature. Let's turn it off. OSHA's response was, that's not a sufficient repair. So the recommendation from OSHA was to bring in temporary units.
And in terms of the temporary units, like, now that the temporary units are all installed, like, is that meeting OSHA's requirements for all those classrooms?
Yes and no. I've gotten lots of complaints about the temporary units. They're very noisy. Most cases, they have to hook up to the return vents, which happen to be right in front of the whiteboard of some classrooms. And to be honest, there's some classrooms that are probably a little bit too big for these, these units. So it's quite possible that if we continue to go this route, we might need to spend a little bit extra to get in some bigger units for certain particular classrooms.
Okay, uh, can I?
Uh, yeah.
Maybe we'll each ask, let's, let's keep it at two questions and then move on so that we all get a chance. My, my question is, there's 162 units. You've changed out ones at Kennedy. They're, they're of a certain size. But we have large units that are on rooftops, like the, the event center, I'm sure, and, and other large spaces in the district. I'm sure those are not the same exact units that you changed out at Kennedy. Have you tested, and do you know that the thermostats that you are talking about with the Pelican system will operate just the same there as they are at Kennedy?
Yes, so, one, they are all at least carrier units. So they're all the same brand, so the controls are the same. And two is, we have three different sized units district-wide. One's a smaller unit, one's a medium, and one's a large, which is like the gyms and the cafeterias and event centers. Between the six units, it's a variety of all three.
So 162 units, they don't include, include the units on the portables? And they don't include, include the systems that are in the kitchens?
So total is 534 thermostats.
Okay, so if we go, okay, if we go with this emergency, it, it's because, because of time, right? Because we're having to put in these portable units and?
It's because of time, it's because of cost, because we feel confidently that the $600 per CO2 sensor being charged towards these thermostats is a cost savings, in my opinion. Something else to mention is, because we're already locked into this CalShape grant, because we have to go through the entire process, and say if we decided not to go through with this process that we're proposing and just go through with CalShape, which we're, we already signed up for, by the time they go through and do all the reporting and finalizing and report everything back and get a, kind of like a thumbs up from the COC, it could be two years or more. And with that, it's because we locked into this CalShape grant years ago that we can't do any changes on the thermostats for those two years.
Okay, so how long are you talking about to retrofit those 163 units to the new thermostats with CO2?
So it'd be all the thermostats at 534 total thermostats. We have 162 that have failed up to, up to today. I'm sorry, up to yesterday, because today, we had three more fail at Lincoln Elementary School. So going through and replacing 534 of, which is all of our thermostats, going through and changing out everything. If we get approval and we move forward, I think we are, give me one sec. Let me get this pulled up. We are hoping to have everything completed potentially by February, March.
Yep. Okay, Member Hill, two questions?
You had three.
Okay, three questions. You can have three. Make them quick, please.
Okay, so, first off, regarding OSHA. Okay, so, um, first off, um, regarding OSHA. So I went out on the OSHA site to actually look and see what inspections had been done at our site. I saw no inspections, okay? So um, if it were a true emergency, I'd expect that those guys would be out there documenting this stuff. Also, I haven't seen any documentation from OSHA that states, I mean, so all we're hearing right now is hearsay from you saying, OSHA said this, OSHA said this, right? Um, I think that it's really important that we, you know, if we're talking about an emergency and we're talking about sole sourcing, and we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. Let's bring OSHA in here and let's talk to them, let's have the board talk to them, right? And so, because I think that we need to hear exactly what the issues are. So that's number one. Number two, I'm now even more irritated when I hear this issue about the Cal Shape grant. So the Cal Shape grant was applied for before the current administration, okay? And then it sat kinda dormant, but then it got revived, okay? And so it got revived this this summer, and there was an RFQ that was put out, and then we approved this in August. Right? And so what I would expect is that if we're on top of everything that's going on with HVAC and we've got the big picture and the master strategy, we would have thought through all this stuff, right? But here, we're sitting here and we're saying, oh, well, we we need to go and do this assessment and we need to jump on the Cal grant. But oh my God, we haven't thought about how all, you know, all these various units are working, CO2 sensors aren't working, the software is not working. I don't think that we have a plan, right? And so, and we're gonna go out and do more work and spend hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars without a plan. I do not see a plan, right? And we're and we're saying that we need to jump on it because now apparently there's all this bureaucracy related to the Cal Shape grant. And so now we're saying, okay, we're gonna kick that to the curb, and now we're gonna go change horses and we're gonna do do something else.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, and so so my, so my question is, right? Is why don't we just stop right now? And why don't we go, if Cal Shape can't work for us, why don't we go out and do another RFQ with the existing vendors that applied for the Cal Shape grant and say we need to have a fast-track, robust assessment where people can present this to us and show us exactly what's going on and that these are the solutions that are gonna work and that we and that and that they will stand up and say, we're the throat to choke. Right now, I don't hear who the throat to choke is. I just keep hearing, oh, yeah, we're gonna try this or we're gonna try this and maybe it'll work, right? We can't keep doing this, right? The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again.
Do you have a question?
Right, so my question is, why don't we start over?
Okay, so there was a lot of questions there, so I'm gonna try to answer them the best of my ability. Uh, first off, I know you mentioned four, five, six years. I've only been here for nine months. Okay, and um, I do take offense in feeling that I am being called a liar. I have no problem sharing all the OSHA complaints that have been keeping me up at night since I've started here. I have no problem. Whatever you need, I will gladly share it. I have nothing to hide.
And and Travis, I wanna clarify, right? I'm not calling you a liar. But what I'm telling you is that when you come before a body like this and are asking us to make momentous decisions. You need to bring data, you need to be bring documentation. In our agenda right now, we have a letter from ACOE that in our response to ACOE about stuff that, you know, they're saying is important to us. If there's something where we're saying, this is such an emergency that we gotta drop everything and that Cal OSHA is driving this, we need to see that documentation. We need to talk to them, right? Because there could be nuances nuances in all this.
I understand that, but normally when you hire employees, whether it's a director, a manager, a superintendent, do you have a little bit of faith in them? And I don't feel that one bit. I, no disrespect. I do not mean this with disrespect at all. I have kids, I I have kids, I don't want them sitting in classrooms that don't have HVAC. I don't. I'm getting, I'm not gonna say any names, but I'm getting a lot of pressure with certain people in this crowd to get this HVAC repaired. I've been here nine months and I feel like I've done as much as I can to correct stuff that I did not cause. This is the quickest and in my opinion, most affordable way to resolve this. I've tested it, six different classrooms. Talking about a choke to hold, hold mine. If it doesn't work, hold me accountable. That is just fine. Whatever details you need, I will supply you. I have everything. I have OSHA complaints, I have William complaints. I have documentation from mechanical engineers stating that it's a controls issue. I'm not making this stuff up. I, every day I've been dealing with this since day one.
Member Buck?
Um, one thing that I think might also be helpful to just like get more of a sense of in this conversation in terms of like determining what constitutes an emergency is the impact this is having on instruction as well. So you mentioned, right, the fact that these things are like blocking the whiteboard and they're extremely noisy, like what have the reports been from teachers about like how these temporary units are impacting their ability to teach on a day-to-day basis?
Yeah, so uh, starting with Kennedy, because uh, middle schools just received their fifty units today, so we'll get a little bit more feedback from them tomorrow. But um, over at Kennedy, we installed these units and teachers were not happy. Um, like I said, they're obstructing views, they're making noise, and most of them are stating that it's not actually keeping the rooms cold. This was a, I don't wanna say a recommendation, this was, I'll be careful with my words, but this was a demand. I'll say it straight, straight up, demand from OSHA that we get these temporary units. My temporary fix for this was to jump out the units and we've been going out. Thankful for my team, uh, we've been going out, custodians, maintenance, even grounds, employees have been going out and switching the units on and off. Then it became an issue of the rooms are too cold. Since we've installed some of these units, some teachers stating that they would rather go back to the original fix of a unit, a room being jumped out. Well, with that, because of the OSHA complaint, we are required to have these temporary units. So currently, like I said, it's twelve thousand seven hundred dollars for Kennedy, forty-three thousand two hundred ninety dollars for the middle school. Um, I'm hearing rumblings that there's more OSHA complaints coming, so those numbers will be going up.
Um, could I ask, let's assume that um, you've done your homework and that the thing we're asking or you're asking us to do is approve this, our ability, this contract to move forward so that we can quickly solve the issues that we're talking about, including the issues with temporary units that are causing problems in the classroom. How do we know, can you assure us that if we were to go out to bid? Cuz that'll take several months before we'll be able to to implement a new or or the the this change out with the new vendor. Keeping the same vendor we have, how 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 convinced are you that we are getting a reasonable price when we're sole sourcing?
Um, I I do feel that we are um, comparing in the cost of what we spent of our mechanical company to come out and install the six units. We've compared those costs as well. Um, and I think the biggest is the fact that we are using the six hundred dollars per CO2 sensor out of the grants to not just six hundred dollars to install a CO2 sensor, but it's six hundred dollars going towards the thermostat as well because it has a built-in CO2 sensor.
We also have our legal attorney here with us too this evening. I don't know if you've got any questions that you might wanna direct to Lozano and Smith, but I could ask Kelly to come up and if you've got any type of legal questions, like I wanna make sure that you know that we have really looked at this and examined it from many different angles. Uh, to be able to help shorten the timelines and be be able to bring relief and a solution to the classrooms. Much like Travis, I know I'm exhausted too from it and um, it's been an exhausting problem.
I guess my question of the attorneys would be, um, is this legally a reason to move forward with a single source rather than going out to bid?
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the question. Um, so the bottom line, just to kind of make sure that we're setting the stage on all of this, is that um, as Trustee Hill mentioned, normally for any construction work over a set amount, uh, you're going out to competitive bid and that takes time. Um, there are a whole bunch of exceptions to the competitive bid rules, one of which is for emergencies. And that is specifically defined in the Public Contract Code as to what that means. Um, and just so that we have it, it's Public Contract Code eleven oh two, it's in the draft resolution that you're gonna look at tonight. Um, a sudden unexpected occurrence that poses a clear and imminent danger requiring immediate action to prevent or mitigate the loss or impairment of life, health, property, or essential public services. So in this case, the board would have to be comfortable making the finding that there's an uh, sudden unexpected occurrence. So in my mind, the way you would get there on that finding, and I'm not here to make the finding for you, this is for the board to decide. Um, would be that, yes, there have been issues with HVAC ongoing, however the specific OSHA complaints and things that have occurred right at the start of the school year are the the sudden um, kind of occurrences that we're trying to address that will not permit a delay by going through a competitive bid process. That would mean, you know, these these issues need to be addressed immediately in order to, again, going on with the definition. Um, prevent or mitigate loss of health or essential public services. And so that's where the facts that were shared um, by staff around the classrooms sometimes even being too cold based on these issues is um, interfering with the ability to prevent the or to provide those essential public services. Um, it's written broadly because these are um, Public Contract Code sections that apply, not just to school districts, but all types of uh, local agencies, so cities, counties, et cetera. Um, so the essential public services here would be providing educational services to students. So having said all of that, I again, it's not for me to make the finding for the board. Um, that is up to you based on the facts before you, but we do feel that there is a legal basis to act um, in to address an emergency in this situation.
Thank you. Does anyone have a, Member Hill?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
I'm sorry, Kelly Rem with Lozano Smith.
The last name, sorry.
Rem, R E M, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Rem. So two questions. So you gave that language definition of the what an emergency is, and then where is this in the document that we we have or resolution or?
Yes, it's on, I believe, the second page of the resolution. Um, the one, two, three, four, fifth full whereas clause.
The fifth one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, but you gave a whole, you read the whole thing, right? But it doesn't say the whole thing here.
Uh, I just read from from the resolution. It's it's quoted from that Public Contract Code section eleven oh two.
I'm sorry, okay, all right. So that was that was question one. Um, so so question two is, um, like, so we're talking about an emergency resolution, right? Um, and the and and the the sense is, right, that time is of the essence. Um, but but it seems that there's more to this emergency revol- uh, revol- or resolution in that essentially the board is giving up its powers for oversight. Is that a correct statement?
I would say not entirely correct, given the requirement both in the code and in the resolution. That staff is supposed to come back at any at the subsequent board meeting and any additional board meeting, so long as the emergency exists, to provide, to report back on the status. So if you take a look at the, towards the very end of the resolution. Um, I think it's paragraph five. That um, district staff shall report to the board at its next regularly scheduled meeting for another continuation vote by the board, including the above specific determination. So it is supposed to be coming back to the board for oversight in terms of how this resolution is being implemented. It was also drafted narrowly. Um, a lot of times when we have emergency situations, we have very broad language delegating to staff the ability to take further actions um, to address that emergency on on an ongoing basis. And that was actually narrowed in this case um, to, again, um, you know, make sure that the board was was making the decision. Uh, if there is, there is always the possibility, because I will just remind everyone that this is a four-fifths vote requirement. And since we have an abstention, we would need yes votes from all four of you um, in order for this to pass. And so I would also just suggest that if um, you know, there was specific language that the board was interested in pulling back further or making amendments, there could always be um, a motion to adopt it with, you know, some amendment or change made.
And then one last legal question. So if we were to pass this emergency res- resolution, right, so we say time is of the eff- essence. We gotta get this going, we can't wait even a month, okay, cuz I I promise you, we could actually do an RFP in a month. We can't even wait a month to get this done. Um, so does this relieve us of legal obligations or consequences if we make a bad decision and we don't solve the problem and the problems continue? Um, does that relieve us or protect us from future lawsuits?
Um, no, in the sense that, you know, again, the recommendation is that this is the the fix for the existing problem, and I'm certainly not the expert on HVAC, so I can't answer that. Um, but there's always a possibility that something else goes wrong or the fix doesn't work. Um, nothing stops somebody from coming along with an additional lawsuit in the future.
And so we, if it doesn't work, we could have more OSHA complaints and we could have more future emergency resolutions to resolve this.
I hypoth- I think that's hypothetical. I I don't think it makes. You can always have lawsuits and complaints, absolutely.
Member Anglian or or Member Buck, do you have questions for the attorney or comments? Okay, I I think we could continue talking all evening about this, but I think we need to try to bring it to a close. Uh, could you, wait, one moment, I forgot to, what did you say about the requirement for four votes?
I'm sorry? Yes, so um, for this emergency resolution, because this district is subject to what we call COPCA, the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. Um, rather than a unanimous vote, it requires a four-fifths vote. However, since we have one member and it's four-fifths of the board. And so what I was saying is that because we have one member absent, we would need all four present to vote yes in order for it to pass.
Okay. Thank you.
Remember, Thomas, there's one last question for Mr. Freitas.
Yeah.
So again, I I don't believe that that haste makes waste. So my question here is, when we put together, we respond, we're, we put together an RFQ for the for the Cal Shape grant. Okay, which was done in June. Um, we had one, two, three, four, five vendors um, basically submit competitive bids for that, right? And so, and they're right here in front of me, ACO, M2 Mechanical, Pacific West Energy Systems Group, United Mechanical, and Veragey. So we already have identified potentially competent firms um, who can not only bid on that work, but could probably bid on this work. Um, and if we look at the scores that they got in the RFQ scoring, um, we had some that were close to Veragey. Um, and since we already have these vendor identified. Um, and by the way, I don't even think we have a clear scope that's been articulated for this, but let's say we put together a clear scope. What's to prevent us from doing a fast-track RFQ with these four vendors? Um, and I'm sure that we could get responses and commitment and a potential contract within a month, especially since we have a purchasing manager on board. So what's to what's to prevent us from doing that and making sure that we've actually got the best vendor and the best solution?
So you're right, we can definitely do that. What's involved in that is one point one million dollars of grant money goes back. Because as I mentioned, it'll take two years to get all of the reporting after the the grant is funded, is completed, to get uploaded to the COC.
No, so you've, we've already awarded the one point one to Veragey, okay? So they already have this. That's, we're now talking about new work, right? So the existing RFQ was to do an assessment, right? And so, and that assessment is basically in flight at this point. But we're coming here today to talk about new work to solve its its existing issues, it's separate from this, right? So that doesn't mean the Cal Shape grant grant goes away, that doesn't mean the contract with Veragey goes away. We're talking about a new contract, and so my question is, why can't we do a fast-track RFQ with these vendors and come back and see what we get?
I don't understand why you do an RFP if you can't do the work for two years.
Who's, who's saying you can't do the work? You're just saying that you can do the work.
No, I think there's two different things. So part of it was Veragey came out, they did the assessment. That was not completed by Sizer Co., who was the prior company that had the grant. Um, and didn't finish doing all the assessment work. In that assessment, we learned from from Veragey as well that um, if they install the CO2 systems. Then that would void us from being able to put in a Pelican system for up to two years, is my understanding.
Yep.
On those, on those particular sites. We don't think that's a good idea. As a matter of fact, we probably would have done a change order, probably to you. I think this would, and that's another piece that was on the agenda that we did remove, cuz that was one of the avenues that we were looking at. Um, to be able to request that we move in the direction of the straight Pelican system. So where we're at today, quite frankly, is that we were moving in all those same directions. Um, and then understanding that there's this um, time element that I don't think any of us knew about that was going to hold us up from making that that change and fix happen for those. for those other units, but then to find out that we actually had to just keep that CO2 in place for the number of years that we have to, that was something that we did not know about at the time that we went out for the RFP. It was something that the vendor came back and shared with us, was a requirement within CalShape's language that we were unaware of. So I think it's fair to say, yes, we did not know that particular piece about the time element until we were made aware of that. And once we were made aware of it, we came back and we were looking at how do we go about solving that, because we still know that we wanted to be able to install the Pelican system, we just weren't anticipating that there was going to be a problem with replacing them sooner than later.
But I, I don't understand, it seems to me they're two separate issues. I don't understand how, if we have units that are not working for whatever reason, and we need to, we need to take emergency action, I don't see how that's connected with the CalShape work. And I don't see how, and I don't see why you can't have two different vendors doing two different things.
The reason for that is because the CO2 sensors that are involved in the CalShape grant correspond with the existing thermostats. So if the thermostat is the issue, if for whatever reason you believe me and the thermostat was an issue, then they install CO2 sensors, we can't change that thermostat out. Because then you're voiding the CO2 sensors that the grant paid for.
Okay, but so then what is, so what is Veragey going to do that's different if we were to go and improve this thing tonight?
Replace the thermostat, which is the issue.
Okay, and so why can't we have a different vendor do that?
You can't tie it in with the CalShape grant. The CalShape grant doesn't-
We don't need to. We don't need to.
Okay, so we're going to forfeit the 1.1 million dollars, we're going to return that.
Just, it's free money, right? So it's, so it's-
It's not just, it's not just free money, though. It's got conditions.
Yeah, fine. So live up to the conditions, but we're talking about real money that's coming out of our pocket, and more importantly that, we're talking about solving the real problem. And now we're, we're basically hearing that we're being held captive by a grant, right? And so what I would say is, let the grant run its course, let's bring in, let's bring in four top vendors to come in and bid on this work, make sure that we got the, the best potential solution, and we go in and implement that and solve it, right? And then let CalGrant, you know, CalShape run its course, right? We're in the, we're not in the business of like, you know, managing grants, we're in the business of providing, you know, good, good quality service to our customers, right? And I'm really worried that we are suboptimizing.
Member Block?
Ideally, we would be able to have more time to plan this all out, but none of us up here are HVAC experts. And we've heard overwhelmingly from the community, whether it's teachers, whether it's our MOT department, that this is a major issue that's impacting instruction, that's impacting how students feel in our schools on a day-to-day basis, and that's escalated really rapidly. And I don't feel like I'm in a position to challenge the day-to-day experience of a lot of different people in our district. I'm no HVAC expert. And so, you know, for me to stand up here and say that this is not an emergency when we're hearing many, many people state that it is, seems like an overreach on my part. We've hired great people at this district to do good work, and I think we need to trust them that when they are bringing this to us as this is a crisis situation, this doesn't happen often, it's not like we're getting proposals for emergency resolutions week after week after week. You know, if this was the fifth emergency resolution we dealt with in the past year, okay, then maybe we have a conversation about excessive emergency resolutions. But this is the first one that has come in front of us since I've been on the board, and I'm willing to trust that in a situation like this, it's being brought forward out of necessity. So personally, I think that while, of course, I mean, it would be better to, you know, in an ideal situation, not have everything breaking down and have an RFP process, an emergency appears to have emerged that's impacting not only students' well-being, but also their academics and also our staff. So I'm inclined to think that this, this warrants an emergency resolution, so just wanted to share my two cents.
I'd, I'd like to say, I'd like to say also that I think I agree with Member Block, and especially because I believe that you have tested this thoroughly on six different systems at Kennedy School, it's working fine, that Veragey's work and their, their costs are not out of line. And I think this is something that we need to expedite because of all the temporary issues that, that are going into it, especially as it gets into the winter and cold months of the year. So I'm inclined, as Mr. Block said, to, to honor the staff's request. Member Angliano?
So Mr. De Freitas and also Mr. Lopez, just speaking in good faith and, and for us to, if we do happen to proceed, do we have a deadline? Do we have something that we go ahead and work off of? And just to keep us up to date on how many units, what are the results with those units being installed as far as like updates, like it could be bi-weekly, just to keep us up to date so we go ahead and inform our community?
Actually, one of the conditions of the emergency resolution is that we will be bringing back to you at every regular meeting, an update so that you know what's going on, if there's any change that happens, it's a piece that you weigh in on and that you give us direction on. And so you will be getting regular, regular updates from us at each of your regular school board meetings until the work is completed.
So I suggest we move forward with the, the votes, knowing that we need four votes.
You might, you might have, you might have comments, you might have some public comments that came through, Member Thomas.
Oh, there are public comments?
And also, we're just on that, we haven't even gotten the resolution.
I know, I'm, I'm talking about moving to the next agenda item.
So do we have comments? We didn't get the comments.
We've, we've, we've had a lot of questions, a lot of things, this is all during the discussion. Oh my gosh, I wasn't given these earlier. Do you have them for this particular agenda item?
Excuse me, can I mention two items, two things real quick?
Sure.
For the RFQ/RFP process, for one of this size, there'd be a little bit more involved that would take a little bit longer than a month, would probably be looking at two to three months if we wanted to do it, because there'd be sidewalks involved, there'd be mandatory sidewalks, there would be a lot of assessment that would need to be prepared that Veragey's already done. So there's a little bit more to it than that. Also, I wanted to mention that in the resolution, along with the update that we'll be doing at every regularly scheduled board meeting, you also have the authority at those board meetings to stop the emergency work at every board meeting. So if you read a little bit further in the resolution, there's verbiage in there that says, you have the right to do that if you want to later on as well. So I just wanted to let you know that there's that verbiage in there.
Thank, thank you. Okay, next then, we will be moving on to-
This is 12.1.
Yes, we will be moving-
I just want to thank staff for their presentation, for their work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, 12.1, Ms. Parks?
Thank you. So let me just get clarification, because normally what you would have done is you would have done 12.1, and I could have come up under public comment. Am I, because I'm going to do 12.2, 12.3. Do you want to hear it all at once, or how, are you, I'm just wanting to know what you're calling up right now?
We're calling up 12.1, but you have, you have 12.2 as well?
12.3, yes.
And 12.3.
Well, 12.3 got pulled.
12.3 got pulled, so 12.1-
No, no, 12.3, right, 12.3 got pulled.
Yeah, 12.3 got pulled. So if you want to speak to 12.1 and 12.2, you have three minutes each.
Okay. So, so let me just say this, that first of all, I think we all understand that we want the classrooms to be ideal. We want heaters to work when it's cold, we want air conditionings to work when it's hot. That's not in dispute. What I have a problem with is that the agenda came out on Saturday night about 5:00. The documents that were attached to this agenda did not come out until 5:00 tonight. And some of the comments, no disrespect to those that, from staff that spoke, but I went back sitting here in this meeting and just looked up things. So in 2003 is when you started your alliance with Sizer Co. What I remember is when Sizer Co. was purchased under Measure G being on the bond oversight committee, Measure G paid for Sizer Co. then, that put those thermostats in the classrooms and put the main unit at the MOT department, so they could operate from there and they could program it from there. So what I know is from that until, really, until Vanner left in 20, March of 2018 is when they left. And we didn't have problems other than getting it, you know, some of the programming glitches, you know, was like getting it all done. So it worked. So I take ombuds with the fact that it didn't work, because it did work. You wouldn't have gone with them in 2015 if in 2003 they didn't work, okay? What I, in looking it up back when, and for some that were here, when our GM Kramer was here in 2001, and you were going to spend $722,000 on putting in over 300 HVAC units, those were carrier units. Yes, not every one of them is carrier. So what kind of caught me off guard tonight, too, is the fact that, okay, you know, the carrier work, the, the Pelican works with carrier, well, what about all of the other HVACs? Who are the manufacturers of those? Will that work, as Ms. Thomas said, for the larger units? Is it going to work on those? But really, my thing is with transparency. I appreciate the fact that there's stop language in the document. Have you read the 69 pages? Have you read the 72 pages? And let me just say that beyond that, the document says that it is 69 pages for the resolution, for the, 74 pages for the resolution, and 69 on 12.1. You go to 12.2, I'm sorry, yeah, 69 for the contract, you go to 12.2, and it says it's 72 pages for the contract. 69 or 72, which one is it? And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to read through them, did all of you? You're going to make a major decision here, major decision on 12.2, the contract. You're going to make a major, major decision here on these two items. And I would encourage you to take a breath, read through the documents. You have had contracts come before you before, that there have been things that needed to be tweaked, whether it was a typo or something. You're not doing your due diligence if you don't read these documents. We're not talking about a five-page NUSD contract that you see coming through here all the time. You're talking about a book for each of them. Please, do your due diligence. At least have an opportunity to read through the documents. It's, postpone it, you know, waste a couple of days to at least sit down and read, know what you're doing. I mean, this, this isn't transparent to any of you nor to the community. Thank you.
So 12.1, Mr. Newk?
He has 12.2.
No, still 12.1.
He has, he has.
Oh, okay, you have 12.1 and 12.2, do you want to do them consecutively?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
That's great. Well, first of all, I'm glad that there's at least one board member who actually thinks, thinks true. When an organization is under pressure, it's bound to make mistakes. And doing things under pressure is just wrong. You need to take a step back and see what you're doing. So we suddenly, out of the blue, have this emergency, and, you know, I, I just don't get that. We're having HVAC problems for a long time, so where does this suddenly come out? Where do suddenly these OSHA complaints come out? The people who are complaining, I mean, you know, of course, it's, it's not perfect, but the idea that this resolution is going to save everything is like a Kafkaesque play. It's not going to save anything. I, I, you know, I'm not going to be convinced that if you change Cisico thermometers to Pelicans that, you know, now the systems are going to walk on water. I mean, who are we fooling? We have a systemic problem with HVACs. The superintendent, a year ago, laid it all out. You know, we have warranty issues, we have capacity issues, we have systems issues, filter issues, there's a whole gamut of things. So this whole idea of give up your authority, do something on the emergency, make Veragey happy, and get a big round of applause from, from maybe many people behind me, it's not going to solve this problem, I can guarantee it. Now, let's talk about OSHA, and OSHA is already CPRA-ed, so we're putting a CPRA out to see exactly what OSHA is saying. Because we don't want to get, we, we don't want to hear like, well, OSHA recommends the ideal temperatures. OSHA has to make an emergency acclamation. If they don't do that, we are not obligated to put these temporaries in. And remember, when we put all these temporaries in, that's going to be a lot of money for this district. That money goes away from the students and from teacher salaries, okay? If we're going to be spending all this money on these temporary units for who knows how long, that kind of comes out of somewhere. So Member Hill is absolutely correct. We need to have hard documents that show OSHA is saying, you got to do this. And until we have that, it's all, you know, this is not about trust us or believe us. It has nothing to do with believing or trusting people, it has to do with facts. A board has to deal with facts, not with, with, you know, hope and all that stuff. The idea to delegate your authority beyond even this is just absurd. I mean, you know, there's one emergency, but why include other emergencies? And I, I do want to emphasize that, yeah, I have two, I have two things. I do want to emphasize that legal representation works for the district, not for the board, okay? A lawyer takes the perspective of what the district wants the board to hear. That's, that's the nature of it, you know, the one who pays the check. If the board wants to get an independent assessment, get your own legal representation. It's very important. And why a lawyer would not insist to get hard documents presented to the board about the findings from OSHA is a mystery to me. The other thing is, we're combining CalShape and Measure O, and some of the things don't work for, for CalShape, right? For instance, district offices and things like that, maybe the kitchens don't work either. That is also something that, that doesn't look right. And then if you look at the, the contract, I tried, and luckily there's AI that can help, because who's going to go through 72 pages in, you know, half an hour? It, it has a very nice clause here. The Veragey emergency quote excludes repair of any pre-existing system deficiencies. So we know where this is going. Veragey is not stupid, they know where this is going. So again, if board members want to appease to the public, because everybody's upset, we, we're warm and we want to get our way, and when the board is going to approve this, we're going to have a big round of applause, that's Kafkaesque. That's not solving a problem. That's appeasing to something that's irrational. So, well, do whatever you want to do. Bye.
Thank you. Let's see, we have one more. Mr. Manzano, Marzano? Oh, Ms. Marzano, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted a little clarification, because quite frankly, I read the agenda with the documents for this. As Ms. Parks said, the rest of all of this that we saw tonight was not available. So some of my questions are predicated from having read the agenda prior to coming to the meeting. And that is to say, do I understand that in 2022, this district engaged in a CalShape grant for 1.3 million that was never implemented? Is that true?
Partially.
Partially. So what partial parts were done, my question is, what part of that grant is completed? Were there performance evaluations or contingencies with that money? How much money is left? And what responsibility does the company that you contracted with for whatever that part was- part was have with regard to malfunctioning units? And with regard to what Mr. Newk said, it is very difficult to work in a room that is very, very warm. I did that for several years at the old Graham School where I would walk in in the morning to a 92-degree library and I would have to open all the doors to let it cool out to be able to function. Or in other times, it would be so cold, my hands would ache. And I had absolutely no control of the thermostat in my room. It's difficult for the staff, it's difficult for the students. So it is a priority, make no mistake, okay? But I would like to know what responsibility the people that were previously contracted have, how much of that money is left and what is intended for that. As a measure of the Measure O Oversight Committee, I'm very concerned when I see parts of this project that has been ongoing and problematic being put in the block of money that I am now going to be overseeing. It's important to me to know that we know who's getting it, what the contingencies are. No contractor works with give all the money upfront and I'll do my best because I've also worked for a contractor. So you do some at the beginning, a performance in the middle, and an end when you get the permit signed off. That's basically with other in-betweens, how that works. And as a point of order also, I would like to say that you have a code of conduct that you read to us in the beginning of this, of this meeting. We will not berate one another. I'm sorry to say, but threatening to choke even metaphorically is unprofessional against your policy and totally unnecessary.
Superintendent, perhaps as we introduce the next items, you can address some of those issues.
I can try to address.
I can try to address some of those. I may call upon staff to, to assist me.
So then we move on to 12.1, Superintendent?
That's the resolution. Thank you. I think the question, I think that was before by, by the community member, had to do with CalShape. CalShape's grant was a little over 1.2 million originally. And of that, we had about 950,000 left, is that about, approximately? So there was $950,000 that went towards that. The first portion went towards putting in filters, if I recall, for the work that had been performed. The piece that was not done correctly is it was never reported back to CalShape. It was an element that we had Veregi go back, double-check on the units that those installs had happened on, go back and actually report back on the units that needed to be reported on so that we can continue to move forward. So I hope that addresses the question. It was a piece that had fallen through the cracks with either changes of staff and as we moved forward, we wanted to make sure those assessments were complete and that the work that had been ordered had actually been done. And it was, that performance piece had been done. So I do want to confirm that. Is that all correct and accurate, Mr. Reddus? Thank you.
Okay, as we move into 12.1, we've had a lot of input. I would like to throw out to the board whether, given what you've heard tonight, we should table this item for approximately one week to give the public and, and ourselves a chance to really produce these documents and come back in a special meeting in about a week, whenever we can pull it together, when we have a full complement of five board members.
I don't know that you'll be able to do it here at this location. I would have to check. Normally on Tuesday evenings on the other, every other week is usually, I think, reserved for the planning commission. So I'd have to check and see if it's actually available that evening.
It doesn't have to be that specific evening, but in approximately one week and when, when Member Jones is, is back in town. Especially given we need four votes to move forward. What do you think? What do you think?
I can make time if need be.
Member Aguano?
One week sounds, I mean, fair, especially if we're down one particular member. So to make a full vote.
Okay, so it looks like there's a consensus that we will not act on 12.1 or 12.2 this evening, that
Because we're doing 12.1, right? Can we do, can we do it once, one at a time because I have a separate question on 12.2?
Okay. That we, we delay 12.1 and that Superintendent work on a location here and a date when we can, can meet is hopefully in, in a week or so.
Understood.
Okay, so that's, that's the consensus of 12.1. Now 12.2 would be the
I think we should vote, right?
I don't think we need to vote to, to table it. You know, 12.2?
So just a question about 12.2 because I think it may be something separate that maybe we might even approve this evening. So, so 12.2 is related to the CalShape grant. And, and that was done a couple of years ago, right? And it was partially implemented. Am I stating that correctly? I mean, there was some money that was spent on it.
That's correct.
And then we went through an RFQ during the summer and we looked at four different vendors and we awarded the, we basically said we want to pick Veregi. And so, and I believe that this is now the contract, because it sounds like we didn't approve a contract prior, right? So we, we looked at the RFQ, but now we're approving the contract. And my understanding, based on the prior discussions, was that if we, if we didn't take action on this, if we just let it lapse, we would potentially have to pay back money. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct statement. I mean, so if we had not enacted upon moving forward with doing something with the rest of the CalShape grant, which honestly, we need the fix. So the nice thing is we've got money coming from this day that's helping to augment it. There are some contingency fees and I'm actually going to ask staff to come forward. Where's Mr. Lopez? I think this is where I'm going to need you, sir. Sorry, I'm going to call upon staff. They, they can help me with this language here. So feel free to jump in if I misspeak or if I am not correctly articulating the work that all of you have been working on with this contract. So basically, this initial piece was the assessment that Veregi went out and they did. They did that assessment piece. That part has come back as part of the conversation that really was setting us up for us going out then for the RFP to then be able to go out and do the rest of the work that would be done with actually adding the Pelican system. That was the direction that we were planning on going in. That was the original plan. It got slightly diverted because of the Cal-OSHA element. And then with this, the, the contract that's out there this evening that we're asking to vote on for 12.2 would allow for that work to be performed and to be able to replace out those units, if I'm correct, with the Pelican system.
The CalShape? One second, sorry. I wasn't expecting to come back up. 12.2, I believe it's just the CalShape itself, not the
Yeah, so 12.2 is for the, the CalShape work only. Correct. Was that your question?
That was the question.
So Member Hill, are you suggesting that we move forward and approve 12.2?
Yeah. And, and just to confirm, right, because I'm looking at the RFQ. I think that the RFQ was really for an overall assessment. It wasn't to actually go in and install anything, right?
It was install the CO2 centers. It's to exhaust the CalShape grant, pretty much go through the entire process. So it's the initial walkthrough of the sites, it's the filters, it's CO2 sensors, not Pelican, but CO2 sensors and miscellaneous repairs.
But if, if we use this grant to, to put the CO2 sensors in as part of the Pelican thermostats, that's works, right? Or the
To piggyback it off of the CalShape grant, to pretty much tag it on.
So we could, we could move forward.
You could move forward with the Veregi and just do
Because of the CO2 sensors, we could install those. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, so let me just, I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure. So we do the assessment and then I'm looking at, where is this here? So it says provide an estimated cost for all, so after you've done the assessment, provide an estimated cost for all identified work, including reimbursement amounts for newly installed units within the allowed CalShape installation. So when we're saying units, is that just sensors or is that actual, like, is that other equipment?
That's to carry out the, I don't have the actual definition of what the CalShape grant is requiring us to do, but it's to carry out the entire CalShape grant. So everything that's involved in the CalShape grant. CO2 sensors, filters, miscellaneous repairs.
Okay. All right. And so, and so since we've already gone through the RFQ and, and since we've already said, yes, they're the, they're the guys, they're the guys to do it. And if, and my understanding is if we don't do it, we have to pay back money?
Correct.
Okay, and is it the whole 1.1 million or is it the money that we've consumed so far?
We've consumed, we've received half of it, 50% of it. Once you get to a certain point, they send you a check for the rest of the 50%, for the remainder 50%. We've exhausted a section of the 50% already. So we will return the existing funds that we have in that
Plus what we used.
Plus, out of pocket, what we've used so far.
Okay. Okay. So if the board's in agreement, I'm, I move that we approve this particular contract.
Could I get a second, please?
I second.
Okay. Five eyes. Member Jones is missing, is absent. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for bearing with us on these very important issues which deals with the environment in our classrooms. So next, if I can find my place. Next we have our student report. This is Jazleen Torres. Would you like to give us your student report?
Okay. Good evening, board members, executive cabinet, staff, students, and New York community. This week at NMHS, we're celebrating Spirit Week, leading up to our homecoming game this Friday against Kennedy and our homecoming dance on Saturday. The theme this year is A Night in Paradise. Students are showing great schools pride through themed dress-up days, lunchtime activities, and class competitions this week. And this Friday, we will also have our annual homecoming skit assembly where each class performs a fun tradition that brings the whole school together. In honor of Latinx Heritage Month and Filipino-American History Month, our campus has been highlighting influential figures like Miguel Angel Asturias and Jose Rizal, recognizing the power of culture, storytelling, and identity. Academically, the AP exam registration and PSAT signups are underway and seniors who registered for the school, in, in-school SAT will be taking it later this month. Students are also engaging in new activities like jazz band, jazz choir, which will perform, well, they will perform at upcoming festivals and are continuing to serve the community through volunteer events such as tree planting at Forest Grove Park and our school's shrunk retreat. Lastly, for our students' concerns, students have, well, they continue to express concerns about the loss of pause, of flex time, as many are struggling to adjust without that period, especially since it provided time to make up tests, get extra help, and catch up on classwork. We understand that the district has been exploring and visiting other schools with similar programs and we, we would greatly appreciate an update on the program or any future plans for re-standing or reimagining pause. But other than that, thank you for your time and continued support for our students.
Thank you. Next we are moving on to employee organizations. NTA, Ms. Bloom? You don't have your props with you tonight?
I, I left all the things that would make us all happy again in my car and my other pants, so I apologize. So hello, everyone. I keep being reminded that I'm supposed to introduce myself each time I speak to the board, in case people don't know who I am. My name is Rachel Bloom and I'm this year's president of the New York Teachers Association. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a science resource teacher and I am always very happy, pleasant, and in a good mood. For those of you who do know me, just go with it. I actually had a good evening last night and I've been fairly happy since. I had dinner with my cousin's husband and their son, my baby cousin Josh, and I call him my baby cousin, even though he's 23, has a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and lives in his own apartment and all of that. He's still my baby cousin. The news is going around my family that I'm president of the teachers' union now. So whenever we all get together, right, they ask me how things are going and how I like being the NTA president. And so the question came up last night. Rachel, how do you like your new role? What is it like going from over 525 students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade to fewer, to fewer than 100 students in only three fifth-grade classes? And that question makes me sad sometimes. this year I will be missing so much. I'm going to miss when the fourth graders light light bulbs for the first time. And they get so excited. I'm going to miss when third graders get their crayfish and they scream like crazy. And finally, one kid gets brave enough to hold it. And it's like, that's the kid. And like, they're so proud of themselves. And I'm going to miss that. And I'm going to miss when the second graders get their mealworms and they scream like crazy, but then someone gets brave enough to hold it and, and they feel so proud of themselves that they, that they accomplished something. And already, I've missed making parachutes with my first graders. We make it out of a napkin and with a few sticker dots and string. And then I let my class full of six-year-olds, I let them stand on their chair, which is very exciting for them, very daring. And I let them release the parachute and kids shriek with excitement and surprise every time they let go of their parachute. They're, they're, they're like thrilled every time. And then they talk to each other, they try different things, different heights. Hey, look at mine, look what mine is doing. They do that observation, that analysis. And so, serving as a president, I'm missing that. One thing I'm not missing, though, is cold and flu season. So with hundreds of first and second graders, we always start class on the carpet. I introduce the lesson. I look out at their smiling, captivated faces and guess what I see? A bunch of kids picking their noses. I'm not, I'm not kidding, it happens. Now, when I catch a kid, I tell them to go wash their hands. And I'm sure there are many kids that are sitting there digging for gold, I don't notice, and I miss them. Now, after introducing the lesson, I send the seven-year-olds back to their seat. And guess what happens? Just like they're supposed to, they Just like they're supposed to, they start doing their experiments. They start touching all my stuff. First and second graders touching all the science equipment, just like they should. Now, I wash my hands throughout the day, but with over 575 students across two school sites, I tend to get sick a lot. So when I took the president's job, I knew that I would only have three classes of fifth graders. No more first and second graders. No more getting coughed on, nose picking, all that kind of icky stuff. And I was kind of glad. At least one good thing can come out of me missing instruction due to presidential service leave. Yes, finally, no more ick. No more, ugh. I'm done. No more gross. No more gross, icky stuff to deal with. And it turns out that I was wrong. I think we're actually all feeling that right now. Trying to work with folks has left me with more of an ick feeling than ever. As NTA president, I seem to be in a state of constant ick. Getting asked about solidarity efforts at Kennedy, and basically being told, without being told, of course, that if I didn't control my people, that negotiations won't go well for us. I'm not going to try and control people. Trying to make me feel guilty that management has to pay for remediation measures at Kennedy and Newark Middle School. Costs $1,000 a month to rent AC units. If we keep on having to remediate everything that OSHA finds wrong with our sites, then we won't have any money for the teachers during negotiations. Right? In other words, if you keep having to pay for the problems that management is responsible for, uh, you won't have money to give to us during negotiations. So first of all, ick. Second of all, we have access to CTA staff members and accountants. We know your finances, we know you can afford it. Don't be icky. Talking to me about OSHA complaints submitted in response to the conditions at Newark Middle School, trying to get me to tell you if it was a teacher that submitted the complaint, trying to figure out who did it. OSHA complaints are anonymous for a reason. Why even ask? Ick. The micromanagement of demanding details when a college-educated professional requests personal business leave, it's called personal business for a reason. It's personal. A week or so ago, Newark's hard-working educators went from the system we have had for decades to people being asked why they wanted to take personal leave. Ew, ick. It's personal leave, it's personal. Ick, that's gross. Not following contract language with regard to evaluations, and then not even taking responsibility for it. Gaslighting me, expressing disappointment because I appealed a grievance, I'll make eye contact, because I appealed a grievance when the response didn't acknowledge any fault on the part of management. No accountability, no mea culpa, not even a "my bad, we'll try better next time." But I'm the jerk, I'm the a-hole. So no, ick. Ew, no. So NTA members have been working in an icky environment lately. We have a full-on ick, and that's not all. We are trying to educate children in an environment with abundant micromanaging, prying, overbearing, second-guessing, unaccountability, scheming, threatening, and now we've moved beyond ick. This is toxic. It's no longer ew, gross, ugh. It's, why am I even working here? How does treating us like this make anyone want to stay in the district? Constant mistakes on our paychecks, people not receiving their pay stub, people not receiving mileage reimbursements, people not receiving compensation for approved time-carded hours, people not receiving their department head stipend, sick days subtracted from people even though they weren't out of the classroom. Having to ask again, and again, and again, to be reimbursed for instructional supplies that were thrown away over the summer. And even just today, I heard of eight teachers that weren't paid their overage stipend. Nothing happens in the district unless I hound the district office personnel again, and again, and again. I'm the jerk because I keep asking, because I keep following through. It's not even about getting what educators deserve. I'm just trying to get my educators what they've already earned. What they're entitled to. Newark Unified School District is our employer. One of the basic functions of an employer is to compensate its employees for the work that they do. I should not have to ask again, and again, and again, and again, for NUSD management to get its act together and fulfill one of its most basic responsibilities: compensate employees correctly and do it on time. And all the while, I'm the jerk for speaking up and taking action. Teachers are greedy and selfish, they keep asking and asking and asking. They're asking for what they've already earned. How can students learn in an environment where their teachers get micromanaged, ignored, and feel afraid of retaliation if they speak up? I've been made to feel like a jerk because I support my people's rights to file Williams Act violations and complaints, to file OSHA complaints. I get told that we should have conversations first without immediately jumping to a grievance. Well, guess what? We have, for years. Newark educators have been asking and asking and asking nicely. How can students learn in an environment that is ick? How can students learn in a toxic environment? What parent wants to send their child to a school and a school district that doesn't share their values of treating others with respect and dignity? I know our parents and families. I've been in NUSD for over 15 years and have had thousands of students. When I speak to parents and families, 99.9999999999999% of the time, I feel very respected. Clearly, the community values respect, gratitude, and kindness. I see those qualities in my students and their families in every interaction. So, management, when you see us educators fighting to clean up the ick and doing what we can to curtail the toxicity, please don't get mad. Join us. And now, I'm gonna go off script for a second. The culture and climate come from the top. So I'm kind of seeing why maybe management might not seem like they trust us, or that they can't rely on us, or that we don't know what we're doing, because the same thing happens to them from above, although not from everyone. So I'm kind of, it's starting to click now. How we get treated is how probably they get treated. Now, I don't know what's happening at the highest level, but there has been progress made at the district office. Personal business leave, that whole thing has, has gone away, that's not going to be investigated anymore. People are getting paper checks to make up for the overlooked paperwork. So there's been progress this week. There's still a long way to go. We have to give up the ick. We have to forget the toxicity. Teachers deserve a safe and respectful environment to teach in. Newark kids deserve a safe, respectful environment to learn in. There has to be a way to have these hard conversations and still be respectful and kind and honest with each other. There, there has to be, to do all those things and move forward. The board, district management, NTA, CSEA, NUMA, community members, there, there has to be a way for us to do this. Because not doing these things and moving forward is not an option. We all agree on that. We all want the best for kids. So we have to do it, we have to figure out a make, a way to make it work. And so, again, I'm gonna continue, and every single time, I'm going to invite you to join Newark Teachers Association, join the educators of NUSD, as we work to create the schools and the students, the schools that our students and our families deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Next, uh, do we have someone from CSEA? Do we have someone from NUMA? Okay, thank you. Uh, so next superintendent, we have the, um, school spotlight.
We sure do. Let's invite BGI to come on up and give us their report. Robert Fang, principal. So excited to have you here this evening. Tell us all about BGI.
Okay, so...
Is there a president?
Just a quick note to the board. I'm super excited for you to hear BGI's presentation tonight. At the next board meeting, I officially get to share our 2425 cast results. However, BGI had the most growth in the district-wide, so I'm excited for you to hear everything that has happened, Principal Fang's next steps, and also what he's doing in regards to his culture and community. So I'm gonna pass it on to you.
One of our presentations coming up.
Robert, maybe you can share with us just a little bit about, like, how the school day was today? I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Oh, so, so...
Dead airtime's never good.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Okay, so I'm Mr. Fang. I am the principal of BGI. This school day was interesting. I got pulled maybe five or six times to go support students in different ways. I had a runner. I also had one who was kind of, it was not a good day for her, so I had to go and do a lot of restorative things with her, and then she calmed down, we called dad, everything was good.
They got back on track.
And then we got back on track, she got, went back to class, everyone was good. And then I had my other student who came in for a break. So we took a nature walk around campus. He came three times, but it was a break that he does need. So these are, this is my Tuesdays that I have. We're also short-staffed during lunch, so I also serve my lunch duty with my students as well. So I'm with them from 11:30 till 1:00, and then back to the student with a break, just attending to his teachers. Also, I am in charge of turning on and off the HVAC, because in the, in the past couple weeks...
One of our favorite topics, just so you know.
I have teachers texting me, like, "It's too cold, can you shut it off?" So I go off and turn it off, and then it says, "Now it's too hot," so I just turn it back on. So I go back throughout the day, and start classroom work, and...
There we go. You're off the hook now. Oh, back on.
I can come back next time to see you either way.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm okay either way.
We're so happy to have you here.
We can see.
Yeah, so that's my daily routine. I turn on all the ACs at 1:30, and I shut them off at 4:00.
Did you know that was in the... We'll have to talk about that.
Oh, there's a lot of stuff that's not in there.
It's that little clause, "Are there duties as assigned?"
These are just professional responsibilities.
Oh, I agree. Thank you. And, you know, it's nice to know that, you know, the teachers can count on you, that you're there to help support them. I think it's probably the most important element that, where they're helping to take care of our classrooms, so thank you.
Yeah, I check with my teachers every morning, like, "Do you need an air on, yes or no?" And then I do that.
Thumbs up, thumbs down. Got it.
Is it gonna stay?
Yeah.
I jinxed it.
Marco. Actually, if you've got your presentation in front of you, maybe we can...
Is it good?
Do you want me to be your slide host?
Can this go? Okay, okay, works. Okay. Okay, good evening, board members. Superintendent Bakar, executive cabinet, thank you for inviting me to spotlight BGI this year. I am the pro-principal of BGI, and I look forward to sharing the BGI story with you. Okay, so BGI enrollment has increased since last year. We currently are home to 293 students this school year, whereas last year we finished at 279 students. This year, we welcomed two new SDC classes, and that altogether increased our enrollment at BGI. Our third and fourth grade classes are completely full, so we have no open seats in third and fourth. In our fifth grade classes, we have six seats open. So we are almost full completely, every seat is almost filled at BGI. Uh, so looking at our student demographics, so we do have 7% of our students are students with disabilities. We have 20% who are, who are socially, economically disadvantaged. We have 19% of our students who are multilingual learners or English learners, and we have 28% who identify as Hispanic, Latino, Latina, or Latinx. So our student demographics is very diverse, um, within the Newark community. So now, we're gonna be jumping into, um, BGI's preliminary cast results. I'm very excited to share, um, the growth that BGI has made since, from the year before to, to last year. So this is our preliminary results for English, English arts. So overall, going from 2023 to 2024 to 2025, uh, you can see at the very top where it says "overall," BGI went from 56% proficient to 63% proficient. That is a change of 7%. And then, in these student groups here, we have the Hispanic, Latino students, they went from 27% to 44%, which is a change of 17%. Our economically disadvantaged students, we went from 22% to 36%, which is a 14% change. And with students with disabilities, we went from 64% to 80%, which is a 16% increase. All of this growth, all of this growth is contributed to the hard work that my teachers are doing at BGI. Last year, we focused a lot on best practices. Last year, we focused a lot on best practices and kind of giving them time to kind of plan and really plan those lessons for our students. And based off our results, it has worked last year. So jumping into our math results as well. So in our math, if you take a look at this slide, overall, our math went from 56% to 58%, which is a 2% increase. Our Hispanic, Latino students went from 30 to 36%, which is 6% increase. Economically disadvantaged went from 21 to 30%, which is a 9% increase. And our EL multilingual learners went from 10% to 16%, which is 6% increase. Our math growth wasn't as high as our ELA growth. But that's a change that we're doing this year at BGI. Math is another area that we are going to start focusing on so that we can make a similar growth pattern as we did in ELA as well. So our teachers will be working to refine their small group instruction, but also looking for different interventions for math as well so that we can increase and bring our students back to grade level. So now we are going to be looking at our LPAC data for BGI from the last two years. So in 2023 to 2024, 53% of our EL students increased in their proficiency on LPAC. 33% maintained and 14% declined. Last year, we had 58% increase in the proficiency on LPAC. 30% maintained and 12% declined. So this was an increase in 5% of EL students increasing the proficiency on LPAC. So we're slowly moving students to be more proficient. And then once they become proficient and score four, then we're looking to reclassify them to exit the ELD program altogether. So we are still continuing to make that progress. And my teachers are making sure that their designated ELD sections are very targeted this year. So that's where we're trying to see if that's going to improve and move the progress forward as well. On this slide, you can see how our students scored on LPAC overall. So schoolwide, the year before, we had 16% who scored a level four. Last year, we decreased by 16% to 0%. But we did get like a lot of new students coming from a lot of different places. We had a lot of newcomers last year as well. In our third grade group, we went from 20% to 13%. So that's a 7% decrease. Fourth grade, we went from 13 to 9%, which is a 4% decrease. In our fifth grade group, we went from 13% to 17%. So we have more students who are qualifying and getting a four. So that was 4% increase. Our economically disadvantaged went from 0% to 20%. And then our students with disabilities, they stayed the same because we only had one student. And then going to our chronic absenteeism data. So BGI's chronic absenteeism is decreasing steadily as a school. And these student groups that we have here is what we're highlighting to show you where it's decreased the most. Overall, the chronic absenteeism has decreased by 1.74%, moving from 10.93% to 9.19%. Our Hispanic, Latino student group decreased from 20% to 15.05%, which is a 5.7% decrease. And then our students who identify as two or more races went from 15.9% to 10.84%, which is a 5.09% decrease. And then students who identify as white went from 10.34% to 5.56%, which is a 4.78% decrease as well. So for chronic absenteeism, we want to see the percentage go down versus going up in our other data. But we are doing a lot of different events in school. Teachers are creating more activities so students are wanting to come to school. So now we're going to be jumping into iReady baseline data. iReady is a diagnostic program that the district uses at every school. So I'm going to share the baseline data that we have at BGI. So this is the, this is the scale that we have. If they're in the green striped area, this is the mid or above grade level. If it's on the green area, they're early on grade level. Yellow is one year behind. Red is two years behind. The striped red is three or more years behind grade level. And we want to make sure that we're seeing students progress to the left to get to a grade level as much as they can. Sometimes they start at the stripe, red stripe. But if they are able to get to the red or the yellow, then they're still going to make in progress throughout the year. So looking at our BGI's baseline data for reading, we have about 44% of students on or above grade level currently. We have 31% of students that are one grade level below. We have 15% of students who are two grade levels below. And we have 11% of students three or more grade levels below. So the goal is to try to move a lot of the ones in the yellow over to the green area. So we have more students who are on grade level. This is similar data we had last year. So we did get a lot of the ones in the yellow move over. But we also had a lot of the red move over as well. So we're hoping to see the similar pattern with all of the new interventions that we're planning and putting in place in our grade levels. For our math baseline, we have a little bit lower. Last year, our focus was on ELA. So our scores were a little bit higher. So for math, we have about 29% of students on or above grade level. We have 47% of students who are one grade level below. This one could be very close to grade level or a little bit further down. We have 11% of students who are two grade levels below and 14% of students who are three or more grade levels below. Our teachers are working closely and a lot of our classes are doing like a switch in our grade levels. So they're doing targeted teaching and targeted interventions to try to move these students left. So we're using this baseline data as how they're grouping students so that they know what areas that they focus on, but also do targeted interventions as well. Okay, so the area focus, focus of areas for BGI is similar to our LPAC goals with the district. So we want to increase academic performance in ELA and math for students in grades three to five by 5% on the CASP. We also want to reclassify as many fifth grade students before entering sixth grade. The sixth grade LPAC, it does get a lot harder. So we want to try to exit them from ELD because it does affect some of their classes at the middle school as well. We also want to continue to reduce chronic absenteeism as well. Okay, so the next steps that we are doing at BGI. So the main goals that we have at BGI, the first one is that we are going to be exploring a lot of small group instruction and intervention strategies to improve academic performance. So our teachers are working on putting together like different kinds of small group lessons, but also working with each other in other grade levels to kind of collaborate to make sure that they know how to pull students in. Some of the groups that they're doing, they are pulling students from other grade levels to give them those foundational skills, especially in our designated ELD as well. So like our level ones are all working together so that they work on those foundational skills to kind of add to them to how they're going to reach their grade level standards as well. Our second one is that we are restructuring our designated ELD program so that teachers are, all the students are being pulled at once. So they're getting the same lessons. And then other students are being, going through like a wheel where they're rotating between classes and doing different types of lessons as well. The last goal that we have is that we're going to create more in-school and after-school opportunities for our students and incentives for being at school. One incentive that we have is that we do track our iReady minutes with our students. So when students complete their minutes for the week, we give them a raffle ticket. And then we do like a raffle drawing. And then we use our site funds to kind of provide some kind of lunch treat or some kind of activity for them to do. So this is a raffle type of job or system. So the students get very excited, they get pulled, and then they get to join me in that activity or the treats as well, too. This has helped a lot of students kind of continue doing their iReady at school, but also some of them use it at home as well to make sure that they get those raffle tickets. So this has been very positive at BGI and it's been working for all of our students. We do have about almost 70, 80% of students who are using iReady regularly. Some of them go way past the hour requirement. So we do have 30 minutes for reading, 30 minutes for math. Some students, they're doing like two to three hours every week, which is fine because they have access to it at home. But sometimes they finish all their lessons so that now we have to assign other things for them as well, which is a good thing to have versus trying to get them on there if they're trying not to use it. So looking at our upcoming events at BGI for October. On October 16th, we have our Zoom Zoom Water Education Assembly. So they're going to come teach about water education. But the person who's presenting also uses like a lot of unconventional instruments and music. So he combines music with water education. And then students, hopefully this will kind of pique their interest in wanting to learn other instruments. We have our Math Festival Family Night on the 22nd, which is going to be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. The program's going to come out, help us host the math event for our families. And last year, it was a great success. Our parents actually enjoyed the activities a lot more because they were having trouble going through the activities more than the students. But it was a great, great fun with the students. And I saw everyone kind of interacting. This was a community event, so it allowed everyone to kind of collaborate and socialize, which there's a lot, some moments where there's not a lot of time for collaboration. But this was something fun that they could do together. But also families who never talked to each other, they were socializing. So this is something that we want to continue to bring as well. We do have a fundraiser on the 23rd at Penn Express. So we have flyers that we will be sharing with the community as well. As long as you put the code in or show the flyer at Penn Express, it's an all-day fundraiser from when they open till when they close. So we're hoping to bring a lot of funds back to BGI so we can use the funds for other programs and supplement supplies for our teachers as well. And then we have a BGI Halloween Parade on the 31st. And our students are already planning all of their costumes. I heard a lot of students are going to come as K-pop demon hunters, which is what's in right now. But then there's a lot of other students who are like coming in a Squid Game and other things, too. Also, Demon Slayer is coming out, too. So lots of different things that are in. Students are already talking about what they're going to do. So looking at our community and culture, here's a few pictures from a few of the events that we had. On the top left, we have is the recess radio. Every year, we hold recess radio, teaching the students how to play certain games. Some students, they don't know how to play tetherball. So we make sure that we go over the rules with them. And now they're pretty much being the judges when they're playing tetherball. So we don't have to go in and kind of regulate. They know the rules. So we do that for every area of the school. On the bottom left, we have Trash Talking Jen, who came to BGI to do a green team assembly with our students. So we are going to start developing a green team. So we will have students who are going to help kind of facilitate that. We're going to get green vests, we're going to get like the garbage pickers and everything else. They're going to help keep our school clean, but also teaching other students how to use the correct bins. And then on top right, this is Newark Parade, Newark Days Parade with BGP. We did have over 100 people participate with our two schools. This is the largest that I've seen. And we had more people come in as like we were going. So it's way more than 100. We don't have the exact count, but our families enjoyed it and they loved it. We also have our mascot, who was very, very brave going through the parade in that heat. So we had two air conditioners on him. You can see on his neck right there, even though he only worked on the front. And then on the bottom right, we had our in-person walkathon, which we did raise over $38,000.
How much?
Over $38,000 for our walkathon.
Wow.
So all that money that we raised will go back to our teachers at BGP and BGI. Last year, we were able to raise, I think, $35,000, which we met our goal. This year, we surpassed it by $3,000, which is set the same goal because we weren't sure how it was going to go. But we surpassed it and everyone's very happy like to see like what we're going to do with this money. And then our PTC is very active, so we have lots of events planned. They're going to start planning other events as well, too, since we have the funds for it. This also increases the allocation we give to teachers as well. And then looking at our, the last slide, this is just some of the things that our teachers are doing. On the top left, all of our fourth grade teachers, they're doing like a California scavenger hunt, exploring California. In the middle top part, they're making like the California landscape for the map. They're using like flour and salt and everything to make like a textured part of the landscape. On the top left, they're drawing the diagram of California. On the bottom middle picture, there's a picture of students on iReady. In class, we offer at least an hour of time to do iReady throughout the week. So it could be 10, 15 minutes every day. On the, on the right is something that Ms. Meyer, my fifth grade teacher, she decided to take her benchmark lesson, learning about cultivating resources, to teach the students how to grow corn. So they actually went out and they figured out what kind of soil they needed. So then they got the right soil. And now the plants are like over 20 inches tall now. They're almost outgrowing the pots that they're in. So all this good work, I contributed to all my teachers and my staff at BGI. Without them, none of this would have been possible for me to come present and tell you our story. Thank you.
Comments from the board?
Sure. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you to you, the entire staff, for the awesome work that's happening at BGI. This is like such a fun presentation to listen to. So thank you so much for all the great work that you're doing. I'm just curious, like if you could like distill it down to like, like one key like effective strategy that you think has helped with academic outcomes and also with bringing down the chronic absenteeism? Like, what would you say is like the, the core ingredient to success there?
For academic outcomes, I think listening to my teachers to see what it is that they feel would be effective. I have a lot of teachers who have been here for maybe their entire career in Newark. So they're here to do the work with our students. So I make sure that we're exploring best practices of what they've already done that works. But also our new teachers coming in, like they can learn from our veteran teachers. But then we also explored those topics and charted everything. So there's like a bank of strategies that they can use. So now teachers are looking at this like, oh, this grade is doing this. Maybe we should try it, too. Like the rotation I explained earlier, fifth grade was the one who did a lot of the rotations. So now our fourth grade and third grade groups saw this work happening and now they're doing this as well. And now we're seeing different ways that they're pulling groups, targeted intervention. And some of the work has already been, been done, but then now they're doing it with fidelity. They're looking to see like what areas they need to improve on. So those are the things that they're putting lessons together for this. And they're actively planning like every day to make sure that these lessons are done well. For absenteeism, we're trying to create a lot of different activities with this, at the school. We do like activities during lunch, recess. I'm going to start all of those again, starting this month, to do more about like Halloween type activities and coloring activities. We have some of our C-1 volunteers who are interested in doing activities during recess and lunch as well. So I'm going to be collaborating with them to do that, to bring students in to really want to be there. But a lot of it is just building those relationships. That's what really matters. I check in with my teachers every week, at least one time, sometimes like five times. So depending on the teacher. But I think that's where it really helps, keep our, keep our teachers being heard, understanding, and really liking, liking BGI for what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I do, too. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Fang and Ms. Allard. And really appreciate all the work and all the results that you're showing. And I think that, you know, data shows that when you talk about academics in board meetings, that academics improve, right? And so really appreciate you, all of your help. Could you go back to the slide that shows the LPAC results? That one. So this seemed to be, I mean, I wasn't sure if I was understanding it correctly. This seemed to be the one area where maybe we're a little bit challenged. Is that, am I reading it correctly? So can we, can you maybe just sort of summarize a little bit about what's going on and what we think we need to, need to do moving forward?
So if you look at the 23, 24 numbers, so when you look at the schoolwide part, those are the 16% who got a level four. So these students are the ones who, who we classified and exited the ELD program. So they're not in the program this past year. So then this past year, based on the students we have, they all scored either level three or below. But then we got like the brand new group of third graders coming in. So then the numbers and the demographics of the students, it changes every year. So last year, we had an influx of a lot of newcomers coming in, so they're all level ones. So then that kind of came, played into our numbers here. The year before, we didn't have as many newcomers, so that's how our numbers kind of changed. But last year, we did implement designated ELD. So our teachers are focusing on those domains for LPAC specifically this year. So when they do the rotations with ELD, they know exactly. So, when they do the rotations with ELD, they know exactly what they need to use. They have curriculum from Benchmark. They're using the release questions from LPAC to make sure that they know exactly how they're going to be tested on the LPAC, but also focusing on those domains and teaching them those skills before they get to that test as well.
Great. Thank you.
I have a, could you go back to the slide on, on the absenteeism? Okay, if, if, let's take the one that's, that, that shows roughly 16%. Let's say that's 15% and that, and now it's 10%. So, really, yeah, the decrease in percent is 5%. But if you look at 15 minus 10, you've increased 5 out of 15. That's a 33% improvement. So, the decrease in percent should probably be read as percent improvement. And it's a lot better than what you're showing on the slide.
Yes. And so, for this one, because if you look at each student group, their percentages, it's not labeled by like student numbers. So, like for example, students who identify as Hispanic, we may have like 60 to 80 students. But then if you look at our group for students who are two or more races, this could be like 25 students. So, the percentages for that student group is what's here. But I see what you're saying for the last column should be labeled differently.
Yeah, so if you, if you, if you had 10, 10 students and last year and five students this year, it's a 33% improvement.
Yes.
So... Percentage points, yeah. So, you, you don't change, don't shortchange the improvement.
Yeah, the, the numbers could look nicer. But otherwise, we are making improvement.
A bigger improvement than you would guess by looking at the numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Fang, really appreciate the time and also all the efforts of you bringing your staff and really honoring the staff on their celebrations, you know? And it speaks loud and it shows the, the involvement from the parents at all the events. It really reflects community. And the images, the pictures that you're showing from all the activities, it shows the culture being built and it shows it in the numbers. The chronic absenteeism is, is decreasing, which is great. Not going against the percentage piece. However, it does reflect the, the community. So, I did have questions, but until you started showing me the different events that you guys have and the participation, and not only that, just raising the funds that, that are over, you know, it's just overwhelming to hear. 30, 38,000 is pretty good. I mean, that's really exciting. So, you know, that being said, I just want to commend you and your staff and also the community of BGI for everything and all the efforts that you have put forth to see the success that we're having today. And Ms. Allard, really appreciate also the support that you give BGI. Thank you.
Thank you. We have public comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Sherry Villa?
Thank you. Good evening, School Board and Executive Cabinet. My comments tonight are intended to clear up any confusion or misunderstandings in regards to the appendices for the 2225 collective bargaining agreement between our NTA and NUSD as bargaining chair for our NTA during the 2225 negotiations. I am here this evening to make it clear and on record in meeting minutes that with exception to appendices A, B, C, D, and E, which are the salary schedules, no appendices for the 2225 CBA were discussed, negotiated, and/or agreed to by both NTA and NUSD. The document that was presented to and approved by the School Board on April 30th, 2023 is the same document that was ratified by our NTA, which included all of the T-A'd articles and the three MOUs for crossroads, in-house subbing, and sixth grade class size, which means that the document that is posted on NUSD's website as the collective bargaining agreement, the current collective bargaining agreement, does not have agreed or the correct agreed to appendixes, aside from the salary schedule. That includes evaluation, claim forms, technology, anything after the salary schedules have not been approved. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Grant Ewing.
Hello, my name is Grant Ewing. I'm a theater arts teacher at Newark Memorial High School. Been there for eight years and going on my ninth. And I've also been serving as a visual performing arts chair at that site for the past few years. I'm here specifically to comment and sort of bring your attention about the use of Prop 28 funds specifically around personnel. Over the summer, I've been working with Karen and also Mike Williams and Mike Murphy to get additional arts coaches, after-school is the current term we're using. Basically, additional folks to come and help support after-school enrichment. Usually through the, through band and choir, through their rehearsals and their events that they do, as well as their competitions. That is my get ready for bed alarm. Okay, I need to turn that off. Been here for a while. I'm going to keep going. And we thankfully be able to get at least two of those positions hired. But with the current MOU that we have approved, we're only looking to use about 50,000 or 150,000 every year that we've been awarded just for personnel. And we have over, I think, $400,000 saved up. And that 100,000, that's going to expire. That's currently has no plan for it at the end of the year. So, I'm here to say that I actually have a lot of arts educators that have come to me or have seen shows we put on and say, you have positions, you have openings. Like, we're trying to work on that. Some of them are in this room right now. One of them had to leave because he has an early morning tomorrow. But specific folks that are looking to work with us are costumers, prop fabricators, makeup and wigs, lighting design and lighting board operations, sound design and operation, media arts, painting, stage management, and many more. The theater facility is our biggest arts facility in the district, and there's only me in that room. It used to be a two-position space, and I haven't had to make, do the last eight years. And I've stayed because I believed in it. But I've been having to constantly make compromises because I just don't have the staff or the volunteers that I can retain. And if we can use these funds to hire more of those folks, which again, would adjust show by show and program by program, that's a scary thing. We would be able to reach so many more students. And it's not just our actors. It's our painters, it's even some of our ceramics students, our media arts students, our video students, our sound students. The, I'm here to basically say, we want to use the theater facility, which has thousands of square feet and tons of different rooms that are currently going unused because there's only one of me. And some of these folks are here tonight to also leave public comment about their interests and their desire because they believe in the work that I'm doing and they believe in our students. And we are looking to, to expand that. And so, I'm trying to bring your attention. And then I'm obviously going to be working with the folks in this room and Mr. Murphy to, to look at possibly hiring more of those folks. Because I would hate to lose that money when there are folks that want to come work with our students and our students are going underserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Robinson?
Hello, good evening. My name is Melissa Robinson. I'm a parent of a student at Newark Memorial High School and also run at the Newark Middle School. Both of whom are currently involved in Mr. Ewing's program this year. My daughter has been there for, this is her third year. So, she is a junior and she has spent all three years in the drama department and enjoys it very much, I got to say. I'm also president of the Drama Boosters Club. So, you are all welcome to join that and also help us out if you, if you wish. I, I'm also here to bring your attention to the $400,000 plus of unspent Proposition 28 funds that can only be spent on the visual and performing arts personnel. And of these funds, over $100,000 will expire this year. I'd hate to see us lose those funds. We have additional arts teachers, media arts, costumers, painters, builders, many others that Mr. Ewing referenced, who would like to come work with us, with the students, teach them their skills, and learn a bunch of awesome things after school, have something fun to do, and enrich their lives. By hiring more after-school arts coaches, NUSD will better serve all our art students of all departments. So, to make it simple, we have the funds. We have the people who want the positions. We have the teacher who runs the after-school program. The only thing we need is the approval for, to use the funds. So, I ask the board members, please support using Prop 28 funds as intended to benefit our art students and hire more after-school arts coaches instead of letting the funds go to waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stoner, Joe Stoner?
Thank you. I'm Joe Stoner. I'm here as a concerned citizen to show my support for NUSD and especially our teachers. I know that NUSD is facing a significant budget shortfall due to declining enrollment as our money districts around California. It frustrates me to hear community members suggest that NUSD is losing enrollment because our schools are not as good as other schools, whether public or private. It frustrates me because I know some or even much of what people are basing this criticism on are the many commercial websites and one nonprofit website that claim to rate and rank schools based on school quality. The problem is that these ratings and rankings are mostly based on standardized test scores. I think this criticism is unfounded and unfair. I promise I'm not here to contradict the BGI report. For several years, I've been studying research by professors who create and analyze standardized tests. People like Dr. Daniel Koritz, Harvard University professor and author of The Testing Charade; Dr. Linda Darling-Hammond, Professor Emeritus at Stanford University and editor of Beyond the Bubble Test; and Dr. Edward Hartle, also of Stanford University. The number one lesson I've learned is this. Tests measure what students know about a relatively small sample of topics, but not how, or where, or when they learned it. To judge schools and teachers based solely on student test scores, we must assume students learn nothing outside of school. Tests have legitimate uses, as in the BGI report. None of these professors is anti-testing, but they strongly caution us against overinterpreting the meaning of tests. What I've learned is that student test scores, even growth scores, like value-added models, BAM scores, say very little about individual teachers. For more detail, I highly recommend Dr. Edward Hartle's Lifetime Achievement Speech, available on YouTube. He challenges what he calls intuitive test theory and the notion that, quote, "brief, inexpensive tests can predict career success." Dr. Hartle says, quote, "These tests are not good enough to make getting high scores the de facto goal of schooling." I challenge every adult to take one or more of the free online S-Back Practice Tests, as I have, and ask yourself, is this test a good measure of my ability to function as an adult? Thank you.
Next, we have comments on agenda items. These comments can be heard. Did we miss someone? Please come forward and tell us your name.
Hello. Good evening, members of the board and members of the community. My name is Cal Garrett, and I work with Mr. Ewing at Newark Memorial High School as an after-school volunteer. I'm a, I've been a theater professional. I've worked as a stage manager and production manager. I've worked in theater education for many years. And I'm happy to offer my experience and my expertise to the students at Newark Memorial. They're a delight to work with. They're committed to the work. They are becoming storytellers, and it's amazing to watch their journey. I'm here to talk about those Prop 28 funds that you've heard so much about tonight. There's about $400,000 that we get. $100,000-ish of that money is going to go away this year if we don't spend it on people like me and our choreographers, our other technical experts like sound designers. And not only are these students working closely with these people and learning their skills, but they're also learning skills that would benefit them in future positions. We have a former student who decided because she was, because they were able to work with a parent volunteer who was a professional lighting designer, they are now studying lighting design at San Jose State University. They were able to really get a leg up on those skills because they were working with a volunteer professional. And if we want to retain those people, those professionals who can get jobs elsewhere, we need to pay them and pay them well. And it's beneficial for those students to work alongside those people, create professional connections, and get inspired by artists who are doing work in their own right. And that will in turn inspire those students to want to do that artistic work and share their stories with the world. So, again, I urge the board and those present to have the power to do so to use those funds to help support students in learning those skills, to improve their futures, and to help them share their stories. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Xavier Arte, graduate from Newark Memorial in 1988. And I'm here to bear witness and to let you know that what they're saying is absolutely true. I'm a product professionally of the Newark Memorial Theater. And thanks to Barbara Williams and Stephen Harrington, I'm a professional film producer and a professional comic book artist. And I've had the pleasure of finding other folks like myself, like Paul Vega, who we both worked on Star Wars together. It's because of Newark Memorial's theater program allowed us to grow. The Caesar Chavez mural that's there today, which is 20 years old, was done by me. There's 20 years of work that I've done that still lives in that theater that has an impact over and over from student to student, not realizing it came from one person and that was me. That theater changed my life. I became the artist that I am. And I'm truly moved about what there is to, to offer to these students. And I do offer myself as a professional to give back to the community, to give back to what Newark Memorial has done for myself, what the arts has changed my life, and my son, who has actually done that mural with me as well, who's now a professional animator. We are now both working on Mickey Mouse today. Arts is impactful and it's educational. It's historical. And it will uplift any student to another level that, that they cannot imagine. I never imagined that I would be producing one of three films that were put out in 2022 that uplifted the Filipino community. The other, the third film was done by Steven Spielberg. I did the other two, same year it was released. I would love to mentor. I would love to give my background, as well as the folks that I work with, and bring them to Newark Memorial. And I'm currently working with five other Newark Memorial folks who are now doing the Mickey Mouse project with me, all from Newark Memorial, all from the arts, all from the theater. So, arts does make a difference. And with the funds that you have, you can change the community. You could look forward to a better future and uplift where the business and careers can be within sight. I'm here today to show parents, to the community, that it's important. And if you have the ability to do it, please make it happen. I'm there with you guys the entire time. Thank you.
So, next we move on to agenda, public comment on agenda items. Ms. Parks, you have two. Would you like to talk, speak to them now?
So, okay, so the first one is 11:03, I think it is?
Yes.
Okay. So, on the enrollment presentation that's going to take place, the only thing that I would ask you to keep in mind is, first of all, you might want a detail of the transfers in and transfers out, because I know I did request that document last year. And it does provide you a little bit more insight as to, you know, why they want to go to a certain site or, you know, why they want to... site, or, you know, why they want to leave another, you know, it just gives you a little bit more information. I'm happy to see that it is on there because it had kind of gone to the wayside in years past, and I'm glad to see that it's back, but I think you would appreciate to have some of the details as far as why. The only thing that I would add is that for you to hopefully encourage staff to be more dil, I don't say more, to be cautious when they are allotting how many teachers per site. I'll use an example, is at Kennedy, they removed two teachers. One of them was a TKK, and it is my understanding that, especially with the dropping of the numbers down to 10 students with a teacher, and then you have the aide that'll bump you up to more students, but my understanding is, is there, they had more students coming in, that they could have held a class at Kennedy, another TK, and they ended up having to send them to other sites in the district. So, there, again, you're splitting families, you've got the traffic, additional traffic, you know, people, I know that I had heard that there were people that were thinking about pulling their kids beginning of school because of having to take their students to different schools and not having them at the same site. So, just as a, you know, to be more diligent, and maybe when they're actually making the allotments of teachers to, to each individual site. Moving on to 14-17, the minutes for the February 12th, I'm sorry, the September 12th meeting, it's been a long night, it feels like already, the September 12th, the 7-11 Committee Meeting. So, the, normally on these types of things, it'll just give, the minutes have only been really giving a brief discussion in describing what took place at the meeting. Now, this is a more elaborate description, but it doesn't say that the outcome of this meeting was, is that the, you were going to check in with the ad hoc committee members about the bylaws, and I don't know if that has taken place. But also, what was, what set me, to bring this really up, is the language in here at the very end, the committee formation resolution and bylaws that were presented at the upcoming October 21st Board Meeting, that's not the minutes from this meeting. So your minutes are supposed to reflect what took place in that meeting. In that meeting, there was no discussion of a date of October 21st, of that's when you were going to receive the resolution and the bylaws. So that sentence would need to be stricken, I believe, because that was not part of the discussion. Am I, do I, do you understand? Okay, okay. So, but, thank you.
Lawrence was, and I can't, yes. You already spoke. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, next we move on to the superintendent's report.
Before we go there, do we need to extend the meeting? It's 9:36. We need to make a motion to extend the meeting?
What time would you like to extend the meeting?
What do we think? Superintendent, what are your thoughts on how much more time we might need?
We can only do it once.
Stay past 10:30, right?
Yeah, we can, we can, yes, we can, we have to extend it if we stay past 10:30. 10:30, there's a...
What I'm saying is here and this, this change.
Oh, we can't stay here. We can stay till 11:00.
So we think we need that full time?
Would you like to make that motion, then?
Okay. I will make a motion that we extend the meeting to 11:00.
I'll second that.
Okay. See these controls? I'm trying to think.
If the alarm goes off, you can blame me.
Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Do you want to do a manual?
Yeah, manual.
Member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Oh, Student Board Member, Dazleen Torres.
Yes.
Five eyes.
Five eyes, thank you.
Yeah, Vice President Thomas, I would like to maybe suspend from my presentation so we can get to the other two presentations. We've got people that have been sitting here in the audience, so if you wouldn't mind, I would like to delay that. If there's time, I'll bring it back later.
Okay, thank you. So given that, we move on to, it's 11.2, Puente Program Information. Thank you, thank you for hanging in there with us.
And actually, my name is Julia Vergara, and I'm the Executive Director for the Puente Project, so thank you, board members, administrators, and community for being here. I think tonight just really shows the complex nature of our work, right? All the difficult decisions that we have to make, along with the human part and the students, and so, you know, it's been actually a really good night for Puente here. I've been with Puente for 30 years, and the reason I'm pointing that out is because this is the 30th anniversary also of Newark Memorial High School. I started the program at Hayward Unified School District, and at the same time, Newark Memorial was starting the Puente program, so we would meet a lot in those early years and get together and share best practices. Another personal connection is I grew up in Union City and went to James Locan High School, and there wasn't a lot to do in Union City back in the 80s, so I always ended up in Newark. I think two of my favorite fish and ship places are in Newark. So it's really nice to be back, kind of to be home. And I brought some people with me, so I brought our teacher coordinator for the middle school program, Phil Leiva, and Steve, and also some parents that are going to come up and talk. And I also just want to acknowledge the Puente team that is here, and they do all the wonderful work with our students on a daily basis. Yes. So I'm here really to give you some context of where we've been, where we're going these last 30 years. Actually, our program is 45 years old, but our program is 32 years old, and a middle school program, which you have, which is 12 years old. So I'm going to start, I don't know if you all could see the president. Just wait.
There we go.
Don't. Want to talk about my day?
Yeah, right?
It's not as exciting as the principal from BGI. Yeah.
Presentation, I was going to try to download and see if I can get it to, oh, we did the same thing. Is there a presentation prompt on this one? Right here? Try again.
There we go. So we are celebrating 45 years. So typically, I just want to acknowledge who's here. The people who work daily with the secondary program is Steve and Phil, and we have five other members, and also Vina Conchola, who couldn't be here. So it's been nice, because now I have the privilege of being here. Our history, we actually started not, you know, far from here, in 1981. We started at Chabot College. Initially, the program was designed for Mexican-American students. That year, Pat McGrath, who was an English instructor, and Felix Galvez, who was a counselor, were actually given a special project by the president at the time because they were concerned that in 1981, they only had one student transfer to Berkeley. And so the president wanted to know what was happening within the Mexican-American community as to only why one student was going to Berkeley that year. So Pat and Felix reviewed 12,000 transcripts, and those 12, the 1,200 transcripts, and the 1,200 transcripts showed three things. One is students weren't taking the right English class, so the transfer-level English that would get you into a UC. Counselors, students didn't know about the UC requirements, and number three, there weren't mentors that could show them the pathway to higher ed. So that's how the Puente model evolved. The program was historically designed for first-generation, underrepresented students. Since then, the program is open to all students, and we like the classroom, the Puente classroom, to reflect the community that is on campus. And it was also the first learning community, right? And so since then, Puente has been sponsored, co-sponsored by the University of California Office of the President and the Community College Chancellor's Office. Our home is UC Berkeley. We're a cross-disciplinary program, designed, again, on mentoring, counseling, and English, and also mentoring. Here's Pat and Felix, they're still very much connected to our program. Pat actually lives in Boston, and she moved there after retirement, but she still stays in close contact, and Felix still lives in Hayward. And I think one of the things I want to point out from this slide is that the Puente model is still emerged in rigorous language arts instruction, sustained academic counseling, and community leadership. Our methodology, the content that goes in those three circles, has changed over the years, but that is still our focus. Our mission, our mission for 45 years has not changed, it is still to help students go on to four-year colleges and return to the communities as leaders and mentors. We're very proud, currently, Puente is at 54 sites, 54 secondary sites, so that's high school and middle school, and we're at 81 community college. The state of California recently invested additional funding into our program with the expectation to grow to all 116 community colleges in the next five to seven years. I'm going to let Phil come up and talk about our approach.
Good evening. My name is Philip Leiva. I'm the middle school teaching coordinator for the Puente Project. I work at the statewide office here at UC Berkeley, and I'm a resident of Richmond, so I'm not too far away from you guys. I'm going to go over the approach here for the program, and by the way, I'm somebody who taught Puente as well, I taught at Pittsburgh High School for several years, and I taught as part of the Puente Project there. So this program means a lot to me, not just as somebody who works as a coordinator for the statewide office, but also for somebody who worked in the classroom and spent time working directly with the students who this program impacts. So Puente's approach is to encourage students to find their voice through writing. I hate to use the term rigor when it comes to what we do in the classroom, but the, I think a lot of people would identify this program as a rigorous program because the students write daily. And this is to help them find their voice through their writing, because what's really important to our program is that we uplift the students' communities and bring out what we believe are their assets. We take an asset-based approach with Puente, and of course, to foster stronger writing skills. We have sustained academic and holistic counseling. Steve can go a little bit more into that when he comes up here, because he is the high school counseling coordinator for the program. We have structured participation and leadership activities and community service. I'll go a little more into the Puente Club and just a little bit when I come back up later in the presentation. We consider the family as partners. We like to invite the families to come to our events, whether it's statewide events, school-side events, school board meetings. We like to ensure that they are involved in the process and that they feel like they are a part of their, the program's growth and what we do, but also their students' growth and what they do. And we also foster community, education, and business partnerships. So, educational partnerships with other educational organizations, whether it's something like Emoja, which is also at UC Berkeley, or local education organizations. And for business partnerships, we've worked with arts organizations like the Cheech Museum, which is in Riverside. We've worked at the 49ers Foundation, and they've hosted our students at Levi Stadium to show them some of the different programs that they have there for possible career paths. So, this is quite a long list here, I'm going to go through it quickly, because we do have some data that we would like to show you, because we think it's really promising, data that is not only representative of the program as a whole, but also the site-specific data. So for Memorial, Newark Memorial High School, as well as a little bit of data that we have for our newer middle school program here in Newark. So we want the students to be empowered and motivated, have a strong sense of belonging and acceptance. I will go a little bit more into the pedagogy as well, but it's mostly around building up from the community, taking those assets, highlighting them, and uplifting them in the classroom. Seeing the students holistically, especially with intersectional identities, whether this is their ethnic, their racial identity, their orientation sexually, gender, however they identify themselves, ensuring that they're seen holistically. The learning environment being a place of experience and of experiment, having programs like for Newark Middle School, they recently attended a field trip to the Exploratorium with us and with other Puente students across the Bay Area. Intentional partnerships across the disciplines, English, advising, mathematics, we have a math and science program for Puente called MAS, and communications, history, ethnic studies being a very big part of that. Increasing their confidence, having them speak in the classroom, giving presentations, talking about the books that they've read, the films that they've watched, the experiences that they've accrued over time in the program, over the two years that they spend with their high school teacher or their middle school teacher, whichever program that they're a part of, that they are cared for, and as Puente educators, that they are focusing largely on the pedagogy of cariño, or sinti pensante, if there's anybody in here who likes to nerd out on that type of pedagogy. It's a very important part of what we do. And lastly, refreshing perspective on their educational journey, deepening their knowledge that is embedded in strong traditions. So taking the things that have worked in the past, their traditions culturally, within their community, what's already working in the schools, uplifting those, but also taking a critical view of the things that aren't quite working for those students, and working with that as well, and building new practices. So I think we're on to the data. Steve is going to present some of our statewide data, and then he's going to give some of our site-specific data as well.
Good evening. My name is Steve Gonzalez, I'm the Puente counselor, statewide coordinator. I've been with the program for 31 years, and I just want to recognize our counselors back there, Elizabeth, our newest counselor, and Sonia, our veteran Puente counselor. And, you know, one of the things that, from the very beginning, that Puente valued counseling, that's what really, really struck me, and that's why it's such a passion for me. I live in Southern California, and I represent the Southern California half of the Puente program. We have an office down there. Most of our, most of our sites are down there. I saw a gentleman walking the streets here with an L.A. Dodger hat, which was very brave. So I want to get a little bit into our data here. Which one do I press?
Press down.
Down. So first, we'll get into, this data is from our research analyst, and very accurate, one thing that Puente does is it puts out there what our students are doing. This data comes from, it's true data. We have the students do a senior survey, self-reported, of where they're going, where they're planning to attend, and then, one year later, our research analyst puts it together to where they're actually attending. So this is 2022, 23 data of where our students went statewide. The yellow being UC, the green being Cal State, the orange being community college, and the blue, private. So this is statewide from 2019 to 2023. This next slide shows our, the ethnicity of students of college going rates throughout the state, and from California statewide, African-American, Asian students, Hispanic Latinos, white, and then our Puente students. Okay, statewide, 80% of our Puente students continue their education, 15% at a UC, 21 at a Cal State, 37 at a community college, and 7% at a private school. So this comes from the National Student Clearinghouse, Department of Education, it is a true number. Now, we go into your site-specific date, data, and, you know, you'll find, we'll see that it's Newark that really, really helps us. I was, I was looking at some data this morning from Southern California schools, and it was quite refreshing to look at the Newark data, again, of the excellent work the team does. And we're going to start off first with Puente's open to all students, okay? We always want our programs to reflect what the community looks like, and it's pretty accurate what Newark does here. So in the blue here is the statewide percentages of African-American, Asian, Hispanic, Latino, whites, two or more races, or others not reported. The orange represents the, in Newark, and then the green represent the Puente students. So you could see that it's pretty accurate. We do pretty well, they do very well here in Newark. For example, 51% of students are Newark, and they have 52% of the, of Latino students in the program. We're a little off on a couple of the other ones. The biggest one is two or more races, but we're pretty accurate of what, of what the program is supposed to reflect, the community. Gender of all the students, 52% in the district in blue, and then the Puente students in orange. And this is something that it's a bit off, and we want it to be better, and we're working on it, something that we started talking really honestly in the spring, and we're continuing these discussions coming up in our fall regionals coming up. The next slide is the students that receive free or reduced lunch. 46% in Newark, 50% of our Puente students, so pretty accurate. First generation, first-generation students, our Puente students here in Newark, 66% of the students are first-generation, 34% non-generation. First generation is defined as here as neither parent holding a four-year college, a four-year college degree. The next one is, once again, I want to congratulate Newark for really, their numbers are outstanding. So we have all Newark graduates, we have Asian, Hispanic, Latino, white, and then our Puente graduates. 87% of them in 2024 decided to continue their education. In yellow, UC, green, Cal State, orange, community college, and 9%. I think I added that up earlier, and I think it was 56% of the students attended a four-year college, attended a four-year college after high school. Like Julia said at the beginning, our goal is for students to attend a four-year college. Once again, this is the percentage of students throughout from 2020 to 2024, and you could see the continued improvement here of Newark, okay? From 8% attending UC in 2020 to now 17%. One of the most telling is last year was 19% went to Cal State, or 2023, and then 30% went to Cal State in 2024. The numbers are outstanding, and you'll see the number of students, 50, 85, 75, 80, 77. It's one of the biggest Puente programs in the state, one of the largest Puente programs in the state. We're proud of them. The A through G completion rate, once again, outstanding here at Newark. For the Puente graduates, 82% of them complete A through G, as compared to 58, 56% of all Newark graduates, and underrepresented students do a 45%. So the students are doing excellent in completing the goal of going on to a four-year college, A through G. And then A through G completion rate of graduates, it's the same thing, right? Oh, it's the last years. Look at that improvement going up, 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 up. And this was years that, remember, it was COVID years, right? And look at, and you know, I was saying in some schools, what happened this year? Oh, COVID. Well, Newark is going, went up and up. So it'll be interesting. Actually, I think we have the data from this year, 2025. So continuing improvement, continued excellence from Newark and their team over there. And also, I don't want to give it up to the middle school program, and the Smarter Balance ELA results, the orange in Puente, the blue in all Newark middle students in seventh, eighth grade, and they're both doing outstanding. So I will call Philip here.
So as I mentioned before, one big part of what we do in the Puente classroom is an exploration of identity. A lot of this is, a lot of what our teachers are doing when they're doing this exploration of identity and talking about cultural history and choosing literature that is relevant to their students and their lived experiences, is working with the framework of community cultural wealth. This is something that was developed by Tara Yoso, who is a professor at UC Riverside, and it's been adopted by our program and highlighted at all of our trainings. This is something that we really press our teachers to use in the classroom. So essentially, it's looking at all the different capitals that the students bring into the classroom, things like their familial capital, their language capital, navigational, and talking to the students directly about what it is exactly that they are already, that they have a high aptitude for, and uplifting that so we start in a positive and asset-based, with an asset-based approach. And then we look at the other capitals, and we help to uplift them over time, over the two years. So one thing that's really important about this program, for those of you who are unfamiliar, is that the students actually cycle through a second year with the same teacher and with the same students, so they are building their community within the classroom. And so with that, we also have our culturally relevant pedagogy. I had mentioned before, senti pensante, or the pedagogy of cariño, and this is basically using not only an approach to the students' minds and their intellect, but also their feelings and their emotions and all of those very important aspects of their learning as well. And this is a pedagogy that was developed by Dr. Laura Rindon. She worked for several years at the University of Texas, and she continues to collaborate with us in our approach to the classroom. So one thing that's really great about the training that we provide for our teachers is they actually get direct training from these like titans of pedagogy and the work that we do. They come into our trainings, and they teach the teachers directly, whether it's at the Puente Summer Institute, or as Steve had mentioned before, one of our regional trainings or virtual trainings, or our spring component trainings that we have annually. So a couple of other things that we do, college exploration, this happens in the classroom, this also happens through field trips. The junior year, most schools will gather together their Puente students and actually go on a trip across the state to visit campuses on the other side of the state. So the Southern California students will come up here to the Bay Area. They'll oftentimes go through Monterey or Santa Cruz on the way up, and they'll visit campuses here. Sometimes they go all the way out to like Merced or Sacramento, they'll take 99 and go up that way. And then vice versa, right? The Northern California teachers will take their students down to Southern California. When I was a Puente teacher, we went through Monterey, Santa Barbara, we went to, down all the way down to Irvine, and we visited UCLA and USC. So it's a great opportunity for the students to visit all of these campuses, so they can see themselves as the students at these schools. A couple last things on this slide. Again, their daily writing, multi-genre, this is narrative writing, this is writing about, you know, analyzing essays and literature and things of that nature. We do all of that in Puente to develop a portfolio that the students build online. They also build physical copies that they can show at some of the family events that we do, to ensure that the community is involved in their writing process as well, to make it real, so that it goes somewhere, it's not just in the classroom. And then we also ensure that our students are grouped heterogenously. We want to make sure that students of different aptitudes are brought together to collaborate together, so that we can take those assets that we identified through the community cultural wealth model and apply that to their learning. So if we have students that typically we do really well on the SAT or some standardized testing, we can identify those students and place them with students who perhaps have other aptitudes that maybe aren't traditionally considered academically important, but we consider them academically important. Some people might call that street smarts or whatever. We bring those students together, and we allow them to collaborate, to build something for their community. And then lastly, Joy, one person who I haven't name-dropped is Goldie Muhammad. If you haven't read her work, I highly recommend it. She writes about all the different pursuits in education that are necessary for a successful classroom, and Joy is one of the most important ones. So some of the counseling highlights that we have for the program. This is typical throughout the high school and middle school programs, academic check-ins. We have counselors who are specific to the Puente program. They are given the entire caseload of the Puente students at their site, and so they get to know the students well, they get to know their families, and they check in with the students regularly. They go into the classroom. We believe that the teachers and counselors for the Puente Project should be collaborating together, so the counselors go into the Puente classroom, and they give presentations on things like the A through G requirements to get into university. There are transcript reviews. We collaborate with community colleges, because community college is where Puente started. It's a big part of our program, and so we use it as a resource. So here in Newark, we collaborate with Aloney College, so that the students can speak with the folks over there who have the expertise in community college work and what it takes to get into university as well. The Puente counselor works with students to support academic, college, career, and social, emotional development as well. And lastly, Puente students can indicate participation on a dedicated section of the UC application. So if you were unaware of this, one of the really important things about this program is that we are, we are given a specific section on the UC application that a student can check off, showing that they were a part of the program. And I would bet that that gives them a leg up on their application in getting into the UC.
And then write about it in their PIQ.
And write about it in their PIQ as well. Yes, if I miss anything, please let me know. Here's some event highlights. I'll get through this quickly so we can move on, because I know we don't have a whole lot of time here. Here are some of the things that we do. This is a list that we were given. This is a wonderful list of items from the Newark team, but I'm seeing this all across the state when I travel, because I do travel down to SoCal to work with teachers and counselors there, and I have done some of this work myself when I was a Puente teacher at Pittsburgh High School. We have parent nights. We have Puente classroom presentations during back-to-school night, Puente parent meetings, bringing the parents into the school and giving them information about what it's like when your student goes off to college, financial resources that are available, academic resources that are available. 11th grade parent night, the UC application workshop, CSU application workshop, and financially workshop. And from our end, we also have workshops through the University of California, Berkeley. We have, there's a program called PODER, also is some clever thing that they put together. If you're unfamiliar with the Spanish language, PODER being like power and then also being like bear, right? It's like the empower the students through the Cal Bear program. And so they also provide a UC application workshop, which includes examples of the personal insight questions and responses that are scored highly on the application. Julia? Oh, we have one more, we have one more thing.
Okay, why don't we hold off? I do want to make sure that the parents have time to come and say a few words, if there's a couple of things that want to come up.
Absolutely. Okay. You can all see that's all more, more things that we do within the program. I'm just going to leave this right here while they come up.
Hola, buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Guadalupe Vega. Somos un grupo de mamás que venimos soportando a Puente para que sepan la importancia que hace el impacto en nuestras familias. Gracias a Puente ahora no tenemos que hacer la pregunta a nuestros hijos.
Is it okay if I translate a little bit? Yes. So she's just saying that this is a group of Puente moms that want to come and share with you the impact that Puente has had on their children's lives.
Gracias a Puente ahora nosotros no tenemos que preguntar a nuestros hijos si van a ir a la universidad. Ahora nuestra pregunta es qué universidad van a elegir.
Thanks to Puente, now they don't have to ask their kids if they're going to go to college, but rather what college they're going to go to.
Gracias a Puente existe la oportunidad de que nuestros hijos conozcan universidades, expandan sus expectativas. Lamentablemente no todos tenemos las posibilidades de llevar a nuestros hijos a conocer universidades y gracias a este programa nuestros hijos están emocionados y entusiasmados más de ser nuestra primera generación. En la mayoría de nosotros la primera generación de nuestros hijos que van a la universidad.
And we've expanded, Puente has expanded their view on the universities, but also showing them how to thrive and go through that process of the university.
Y solamente tenemos la petición de que por favor sigan soportando a Puente, que vean el impacto que tiene en nuestros hijos, en nuestra comunidad. Incluso muy personalmente, mi estudiante tiene un IEP, tiene autismo, está en el programa Puente ahora mismo en la, en la middle school. Pero existe la posibilidad de que él vaya a la universidad gracias a Puente, que lo están apoyando, la consejera de Puente que lo está apoyando ahora mismo. Entonces esto abre la oportunidad para más niños con IEPs y que tengan alguna discapacidad para ir a la universidad. Y no saben el impacto que tiene en nuestra familia y en otras familias de aquí de Nueva York.
Her son is hijo.
Mi hijo.
Her son has IEP, and he's in the middle school Puente program, and now he sees the potential, and she sees the potential in him, so she just asked that you continue to support the Puente program.
Thank you. Bueno, muchas gracias a todas. Muchas gracias por escucharnos y esperamos, por favor, una vez más, sigan soportando a Puente. Y gracias por todo y gracias a Puente por inspirar y por tomarse el tiempo de ayudar a nuestras familias a tener un mejor futuro. Gracias.
She was just thanking all of us for supporting the program. Is there anyone else? These are also, I think, some of the other things that the program here at Newark has done. I wanted to say something that's really important. You know, we are UC-sponsored programs, and I think the hardest thing for us is when we don't see that color bigger on the UC and smaller on the CSU, right? But I think what we've learned is that most of our students are UC-eligible. Usually, it goes between 50% to 60% UC eligibility, and that is what we shoot for, and that is what we strive, and that is why we have our foundational trainings at UC Berkeley. But what happens is, is that students want to stay close to home, right? So what we're learning about our students is that the way to be able to stay close to home is to go to a CSU. And the CSU actually does a really good job of taking care of our students and rolling out the red carpet for them. There's also a box on the CSU application for Puente students. So a lot of times what that means is not that our students will get into a UC or to a CSU, but they will have a second review of their application. So for example, at Berkeley, at UCR, and at UC Davis, every year, we know that our Puente students, well, their applications will be reviewed a second time, just to make sure that nothing was missed for them to be able to go to that, to that school. So I think for me, that's really important to point out. And you know, we'd like to open it up to questions from the board right now.
Question? Anyone?
Ms. Bergara, Ms. Leva, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you for your time. Thank you for educating us, to giving us the data, and also the progress that Puente has brought to our community as far as having the pedagogy of cariño, which reflects on our, on our counselors, on our students, but also in our teachers. Special thanks to, you know, the counselors that we currently have here, Ms. London, Ms. Cecina, Ms. Vinegas, Ms. Torres, and Ms. Canal is, and the ones that I didn't mention, but thank you for the time that you pour back into our students, because it reflects. And I'm not saying it just because you have the representatives here, but it shows. Every time students come back, alumnis, they come and they have so much respect, so much cariño for you all. So really kudos to you all, and just continue to, we'll continue to see our families, our parents that are here. Congratulations. It shows, and thank you for being here, really representing. I have three children, four, actually, four children, one that went to Aloney, and was, she graduated from Puente, at Aloney, came back, and now she's at San Jose State University. So I have a student in, as a senior, high school, he's in Puente, an eighth-grade student as well, in eighth grade as Puente. So my fifth-grade student wants to be in Puente, too. So really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to commend Puente on the wonderful work you've done with our Puente students, but I'd like to challenge our high school, because 80%, that's a huge number of your Puente students at the high school that are A through G eligible, but what about the 53% of our students that are not? But what about the 53% of our students that are not? So how can we spread the wealth? Instead of concentrating so much on the Puente students, how can we increase Puente to get that 53%, which is among the lowest in Alameda County, and get it higher? That's my challenge.
And I think that's always a good question. I know that our Puente counselors probably use their Puente skills and their talent with their non-Puente students. The idea is how do we Puente-ify more counselors and more teachers? And actually, we just did that in Southern California where we had a principal who was merging a middle school with a high school. And we did a three-day foundational training just for her high school. And we did professional development with their counselors and with their teachers. And be happy to share more about that at a later time and maybe how we can do that. And still retaining the Puente program because I think the Puente program serves as that anchor as best practices. But also I think through professional development, we could show best practices to other teachers and counselors.
Thank you.
Just want to say a quick thank you to you, the whole team, to all the Newark Memorial staff, to the parents who came and spoke tonight. Puente does amazing work. We know how incredibly valuable it is for, you know, generations of Newark students. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you and great presentation and the results are, yeah, very impressive. They're very powerful. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Member Thomas. President, Vice President Thomas, our student board member.
Now that I have like all of you guys here, I'd like to thank you from my heart for all of what you guys do. You know, my stories, my counselors, I consider you guys my family. Probably even, you know, I call her like my school mom. I'm a product of your program. I've been here since sixth grade, middle school, you know, seventh grade, yes. So I can just say what they do is great. I love what they do. I would like, love to see this program in other schools. I would love to see it expand more. But I just say, I'm thankful for all of you guys, each and every one of you guys. Thank you.
Next, we move on to 11.3, pupil services enrollment presentation.
That's pretty. Okay. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Are you gonna introduce or do I just get started?
So I'm excited to introduce Anna Scofield, who's going to be presenting our enrollment center data for this year. So very excited. She's our coordinator of pupil services. So thank you, Anna, for being here.
Thank you. So good evening, board members, superintendent, and community. Tonight, I'll be sharing a year one review of our centralized enrollment process, highlighting successes, transfer data, and areas where we are working to improve. From February 19th through August 6th, the enrollment center supported 1,002 families. We processed 557 enrollments and completed 160 declarations of residency. This shows how centralizing the process has streamlined support for families and schools. This chart shows current enrollment compared with projections for the 25-26 school year. Schilling is under by 29 students, BGI is down 22, BGP is down 28, Coyote Hills is above projection by 25 students. Kennedy is slightly below by 18, while Lincoln is above by 56. At the secondary level, the middle school is down 55 students, the high school is right on target, and Bridgepoint is down 25 students. Crossroads is slightly above projection with three additional students. Overall, our enrollment is 94 students below projections, but we continue to monitor trends closely. And we continue to enroll families. We launched centralized enrollment to create a consistency across schools, provide families with one-stop support centers, improve data accuracy and synergy, and identify unduplicated students immediately. This consistency is already benefiting both families and staff. Feedback from families has been very positive. They appreciate the one-stop service and reported a smoother experience. Clerical staff at sites were freed up to focus on school operations. We also saw reduced errors and faster processing of synergy entries and transfers. These are strong indicators that the shift to centralized enrollment is working. So our enrollment center manages both intra-district transfers and inter-district transfers. For intra-district transfers at the elementary level, families submit a form which is stamped, logged, and then reviewed. When we look at the data more closely, intra-district transfers increased slightly this year with 118 requests compared to 106 the previous year. About half of those were approved both years. Top reasons, three top reasons for a transfer request was one, address change to keep siblings together and overflowers who wanted to stay at that school site. For inter-district transfers, families must first apply with their home district. Once approved and forwarded to us, we review the attendance, grades, and discipline records before making a decision. Families are then notified with an option to appeal at the county level if denied. Inter-district transfers also grew. Outgoing transfers increased from 119 to 156, while incoming transfers more than doubled from 32 to 73. This indicates stronger interest from families outside the district as well as increased mobility of our own families. And also, the three top reasons for wanting to transfer out, the top was specialized program, like the dual-language immersion program, Science Magnet. Other reason, continuing enrollment and parent employment. While year one was a success, we have clear goals moving forward. First, we need to better define and assign staff tasks to improve efficiency and accountability at the enrollment center. Second, we plan to send out the intent to return forms earlier in the spring to support staffing and classroom planning. Third, we will strengthen our family outreach through multilingual communication, early notifications, and varied contact methods. Finally, we will continue clarifying the enrollment process by using visuals, step-by-step guides, checklist, and frequently asked questions to reduce confusion. Thank you for your continued support of this transition. We are confident that centralized enrollment is creating consistency, improving data accuracy, and making the enrollment process easier for our families. We look forward to building on year one's success. And last but not least, I want to end this by recognizing Nicole Lemus for her tremendous effort and long efforts making this happen. I am so grateful for her commitment and dedication to the enrollment center. She would have been here, but she's working on something. Any questions?
Are we supposed to be using the request to speak? Because I guess this works. I'll just assume that, there you go, member block.
Thanks. I pressed the request to speak as you were speaking. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's really helpful to see an overview of the data. Does the data include TK enrollment? It does? Okay. And do you have any like theories as to why like some sites were like over projections and some were significantly under? Like, I kind of would have expected it to be like all below projections or all above. Like, why do you think like some sites were significantly over and some were significantly under?
You know, I'm not sure. I mean, just to be, you know, we do have our enrollment meeting. Tracy, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
We do have our enrollment meeting and we discuss these things.
Yeah, so we actually have been meeting weekly for really the past year, I would say. We made the decision that we really wanted to be able to move to centralized enrollment. So I think the one school I think that probably stands out is having a higher number of populated students is Lincoln. We purposely did that as an overflow. Lincoln was sitting low. We were trying to bring some population in there. We looked at some of our programming that we had and felt like they had the most unique space for us to be able to help and support some of our families and students with their special needs. And so that definitely was one of our overflow students. And we were also trying to make sure that we met the board's mission, which was to make sure that we optimized all of our schools. Like trying to bring them like all to the same level, like, you know, you guys, it was one of the measures that you had asked for some time back is that we had parity amongst each of our schools as far as sites go. So, and trying to be able to help support that over at Lincoln, that was an element that we brought in. So I think that was the one school that to me really stuck out is having a significant increase in population. And then we also had an increase in TK at some of our school sites. Not as many TKs as we had exiting out of the high school.
And as we were, you know, because we were planning, like, we started looking at how many TKs enrolled last year, right? So that's where we start. And then as our numbers, our enrollment numbers started increasing, that's when we, as enrollment team, decided, hey, we're gonna need one more class at this site. And that's how these discussions were happening.
There was one other shift too that was made, I think with special education. That was to bring some of our students back to their homeschool sites. So there is some evenness that happened with that as well as being one of the measures that we wanted to make sure that kids were local to where their schools were. And so we worked really hard this year to try to work on that alignment. It was over like the last 18 months that it took us to kind of sit there and take a look at that and figure out how we could shift our programming to ensure that kids were closer to their homeschools.
Mr. Agüero?
Thank you Superintendent Akar. That was actually one of the questions as well on how we're revisiting our families that are receiving the services. I didn't see the McKinney-Ventle families, therefore revisiting the list, updating. We know that there's a lot of doubled families that live, doubled up. And we want to make sure that we are identifying the correct, you know, numbers of children, also students attending the schools. And just to follow up with the list and update the list.
Yeah.
I really appreciate the presentation, Ms. Anna. And yes, a big shout out to Ms. Nicole Lemus. She's phenomenal and she really works her numbers. And I really appreciate having her in the centralized office. Thank you.
And I will say, we do have, as of today, 241 McKinney-Ventle families. I know we just certified a few more that still need to go in the system. So as of, I believe as of September 29th, we had 200, or September 19th, sorry, we had 241.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Did you want me to clarify anything that was said about Kennedy? No, we're good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Anna, for that presentation. Thank you to both you and Nicole for putting it together.
Next, we move on to superintendent's response to ACOE and approval of the Local Control and Accountability Plan.
Yeah, before you, is a letter that I sent back out in response. I've been working very closely with the ACOE team from a fiscal standpoint. They are, they did appreciate the unaudited actual report and the multiple-year projection that went along with that as to how that kind of redefined things. I would anticipate that we will be receiving a letter from them. I think their biggest concern out there, I think at this point, I think has been addressed as far as bringing in the multiple year to being more closely aligned. We still have work to do in that third year out as we turn into first interim. We'll be working with you on identifying some additional budget strategies that we'll be bringing forward at that time. Staff's already begun taking a look at that as to what we need to be doing. Also continuing the practices that we've done for the last year and a half that have been implemented on budget strategies. We continue with that. But we are also looking at staffing for next year. And we're going back and we're taking a look at those that were in categorical programs over the last couple of years that the general fund has picked up and whether or not those services are still needed or are those things that we can let go of now that we no longer have the categorical funding that goes along with it because it's really encroached on the general fund. So we are going back and taking a look at all staffing that fell in that loop over the last couple of years. And want to make sure that we have truly identified what those services are and who the people that go along with it. And then making sure that all of our schools still remain right-sized as we continue maximizing out our contract maximums to ensure that we have adequate space for all of our students.
Do you have an example of a categorical program that we should be looking at?
Yeah.
Most categorical programs went away long ago.
Well, actually, there's still some that require, you know, like specialized funding, right? So like our ELOP grant that went away last year, we only received a portion of the funding back this year. But there are, I think, 19 positions that were inside that particular funding source. I look at that as being like a categorical, right, because it was specialized funding. So in looking at that, although our general fund picked it up for this year, it was a huge encroachment on that general fund as to, you know, whether or not we can go off and continue to maintain those types of services or is it something that we need to go back and give early notice to, to our folks, let them know, or find other positions that we need to backfill in other areas so that maybe they have the right kinds of credentials that we need to help support us.
So are you saying that the ELOP funds aren't covering the overhead for the ELOP program? But we're maintaining the staffing for it?
I think it's a couple of different things. So, I'm sorry, I think I misspoke. The 19 positions were LRE, Learning Recovery. I'm sorry, I think it was not the ELOP, it was LRE. It's late. So we only received back a portion of LRE this year. We didn't receive the entire funding portion back. So we're looking at, you know, what we're doing with those funds, whether or not we're gonna take some of the funding back to help relieve the general fund and then have it covered with the LRE. Those are things that we're taking a look at. And then we're looking at all the positions because we didn't give enough early notice last year to be able to put them on layoff notice because we weren't aware of how much that funding was going to be slashed. So I think those are some things that we need to go back and we need to revisit. Those are important elements. There were some positions inside ELOP. We continue to look at those as well and how to help and support our families. And whether or not there's enough funding to be able to help do that. You'll be getting a report at the next school board meeting on our Thing Together program. We're gonna bring back a piece on that. We're going to bring back a piece on that, so you'll be seeing that at the next board meeting.
Yeah. I, I guess I've been concerned that the after-school program should not impinge on our general fund.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Great. So that brings us to the consent calendar.
Citizens Bond Oversight, twelve point four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't notice that. Twelve point four, citizens' bond oversight appointment. Yes, I, I had a question, too, about that, because the individual that you're recommending did not have any attachment.
That is for sure a staff error. That is a staff error, not to have an attachment for the application that should have been on there. There is a recommendation, I know it was received by the Measure-O Committee, and perhaps that's why it's not here, because I think that measure, I think that that recommendation's coming forward to you, because the committee's done the review.
So can we put that on the next agenda and have the application of that individual attached to it?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we can move on to the consent agenda personnel items. Is there any board member that would like to pull any of these agenda items, the resolution or the job description or the PAL personnel report? If not...
Sorry, could I quickly pull thirteen point three, just ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you.
So let's, can I get a motion for thirteen point two and thirteen point four?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Please vote. How do I vote?
What if we all cancel the request to speak? If you cancel the request to speak?
I, I don't see my, something's messed up with mine. I'm not, do I do, look at controls? No?
Yeah. We can do roll call.
Let's do a roll call vote, but I'd like to learn why I'm not seeing my vote. Please roll call vote.
Member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Member, or Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
So, member Ayala Torres?
Yes.
Five, eyes.
Okay, four votes, five votes, thank you. Next, thirteen point three.
So, yeah, I just had a quick question. Maybe this is best directed to Assistant Superintendent Allard. So I was just wondering about the intersection between this position and the public comments we had heard about use of Prop 28 funds before they expire. Is this position in any way connected to that, or how does that all operate? And is there any additional money that we need to spend soon before, before it goes away with regards to Prop 28?
We're required to spend Prop 28, 23, 24 allocated funds, so that is a big focus right now, as everything else continues to roll over.
Okay.
Yes, this position is...
Something that will help expedite or allocate those funds, so that we can continue to get additional supports of arts and music in our schools.
Okay, cool. So this would, in, like, be one step along the way to increasing the capacity of the high school to offer more different, like, arts-related options?
To the high school and also the other sites as well.
Great. Thank you.
If I could just expand upon that, because I think the feeling that was, came forward from the speakers, that this is only for arts, it also is for STEAM learning. And so I know that's been an important focus on our board, and we want to make sure that we find local artists and professionals that can come in and offer support systems to our students, so that they have access to things that maybe they would not ordinarily have access to. And so that really is the purpose of what this position is, is to be able to bring that convening together and to identify those folks out there that can do that. I know we have run into some, I mean, as recently as, at the Newark Days Community Day, we were out there, we talked with some STEAM people that were out there, they do some amazing STEM work. We would love to see them come in and be able to help and support our students, and super exciting.
So would you like to make a motion?
I had a quick question.
Sure.
So really...
Sorry, now I see your name.
No, no worries.
I'll learn how to use this system, and then I don't have to, you do it anymore.
So, so this particular thirteen point one, this position, sorry, I apologize, thirteen point three, the job description, it's a roaming position, is that, is that correct? Is that the middle school, elementary, and also high school?
Can I speak to this?
Yeah, the position's designated to help support TK through twelve, and this supports as it relates to the vision of performing arts and the STEAM program, to really make sure that we are increasing capacity within the sites, but also the program offerings for our students.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve thirteen point three.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Member Block?
Yes.
I'm sorry, member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Student Board Member Ayala Torres?
Yes.
Five eyes.
Okay. Thank you. So next, we move on to consent agenda non-personnel items. Would any board member like to pull an item? Yes. Mr. Hill?
I, I'd like to request that we actually move item fourteen point seven to the next agenda. So just as Ms. Parks had mentioned earlier in her comments, I had taken a look at the minutes, and I don't think that they reflect accurately what was discussed during that, that special board meeting. And so I'd like for somebody to go back and watch that meeting and take a second stab at, at looking at them. So I'm, I'm asking that we take fourteen point seven and push it out to then, to look at and approve in the next.
Fourteen point seven is contract...
Did I do the wrong one?
Contract ratification.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm sorry.
Is it seventeen? Let me just double check.
Seventeen, sorry, fourteen point seventeen.
Fourteen point seventeen.
So it's the minutes, the minutes. So if we could go and take a second look at those and bring them back in the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so could I, before we vote on that, could I get a motion for the remaining, remaining fourteen point two through fourteen point sixteen and fourteen point eighteen?
I'll make a motion to approve items fourteen point two through fourteen point sixteen, along with item fourteen point eighteen.
Okay. Thank you. Please vote at my...
You need a second.
Oh, I'll second that. Please vote.
I think we need a roll call? Or is your voting working? Oh, it's working. I'm sorry, could I get who made the second?
There it is. Five eyes, thank you.
Block, Thomas.
Motion. Thomas, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, should we take a vote on moving fourteen point seventeen to the next meeting?
I move that we, we move fourteen point seventeen to the, to the next meeting, and that we, we have people take a second look and make sure that they're accurate.
A second.
Okay, please vote. We go to Board of Education Committee Reports, Announcements, Requests, Debrief, and Discussion. Mr. Aguiano?
So, yes, we went ahead, spoke with Ms. Croce in regards to moving a date closer for the, the committee itself to meet. We do have a set date, and I have not have it in front of me, I apologize. But I could definitely just look and just come back to that if you would, please.
Oh, thank you.
No lengthy comments. I know October is a tough month in education. Teachers get burnt out and tired, students are tired. It's the heart of the semester, so just hang in there, everybody, and Thanksgiving break is just around the corner.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, so echoing member Block, yes. So I know everybody's working hard, and thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. And also just want to acknowledge that we had an event, that Vice Mayor Little had put on an event over the weekend, so superheroes, which I think was a great concept, it's basically kind of the unsung heroes in, in government, and it was down in the Silman Center, and we had member Aguiano and Vice President Thomas and myself down. And thank you, Superintendent, for making sure that we had proper decorations. And it was a fun event and a great turnout, lots of kids, and from all over. And who knows, maybe we'll have an increase of enrollment as a consequence, so, thanks.
And I guess my, in the interest of time, and we've been here quite a, quite a long time, the only thing I, I'd like to know is with Prop thirty, twenty-eight, yeah, why, why do we have individuals that came and spoke, and that came to speak to us that are more than willing to do this work, and yet...
Staff will provide you with a report.
Pardon?
Staff can provide you with a report. We can do a staff report and help you with that. So they're, they are receiving some of the funds that are happening there at the high school. I don't want you to think that they're not receiving funds. They are receiving funds. We're trying to make sure that it's evened out, and so that there's a variety of options out there for students.
But the fact remains, we haven't spent it all, so is it, does that speak to this new, this new position we have that can reach out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
And provide the support systems, yes. It's exactly the intent. Because everybody's having a hard time, you know, identifying artists that are out there across the board, not just at the high school, but, but throughout our schools. We want to make sure that we have good quality programs. We want it to be able to intersect with perhaps our after-school programs that we're looking at doing next year with the city, is being one of the options to be able to help and provide the community with access to quality programming after school, that also gets kids connected to things that maybe they never had an opportunity to be connected to, whether it be in dance, or music, or something to do with STEAM-type activity or robotics. So I think there's lots of opportunity out there. So looking forward to providing you with more information on how we move forward with the plan.
Okay. So, given that, oh, yes, Mr. Aguiano?
Thank you for coming back to me. I just wanted to echo what all of my fellow members, board members just mentioned, and really just to thank the, the events for, for the PTSA, the PTC, the PTA, you know, volunteers that have been bringing different events that involve all the community, staff, students, to volunteer and participate in these events. It's really, with Newark, the middle school, they had the car show, and it had so much, so much engagement from the community. It was a great turnout. We had a lot of volunteers. We had, so the event itself was, was really a positive, you know, a community event that people bonded, we connected. And I say "we" because I also volunteered, and it was just phenomenal to, to be a part of that. Also, we do have Safe Roads to School that we're celebrating for tomorrow. It's an International Walk to School Day. So please come out, engage, you know, get our community involved to walk, create a healthier environment for, for our students, our staff, and we'll be volunteering, I, I say myself, at one of the schools to welcome our students that are walking, and to encourage them to be safe and always be cautious while walking from home to school or school to home. So really appreciate the time, and also to all the families that, that came out today, all the staff, the students, and also, you know, for coming today and, and, you know, voicing their opinions. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Okay, with that, do we have to take a vote to adjourn, or can we just adjourn?
No, you need to let your superintendent talk for just a moment, because...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We bypassed my, my little piece, and I like to say a few things.
No, you're right.
So I want to give a big shout out to our middle school. They did something unique. They had a wonderful car show that brought in incredible money. I want to thank our staff, James Dotsey, our PTA, for making it happen. They raised some great funds to be able to help. I think the community had a blast out there with the vehicles and the cars. I think this will become a new tradition for the middle school, so super excited to be able to give them a big shout out. There's been some great things happening. On Monday, we have professional development for our staff and for teachers and our classified employees. And I just want to thank all the different presenters. I want to thank Ms. Allard for her work and her team's work for pulling it together and, and making sure that people had access to important information that they needed to help and support our kids. You can see that data's starting to change. What we're doing academically is really important. It's one of your biggest goals out there that you are challenging with, with. And we, every single day, have conversations about how we can help and improve. I'm excited to be able to work with all of our teachers and staff. It was great to see BGI's, you know, information. And at the next school board meeting, at a regular meeting that we're going to have on the twenty-first, you're going to see some really important data that I know Mrs. Allard is super excited about sharing with you. We have just been delighted to see some of the gains that we're getting in certain areas, and then thinking about the next strategies that we need to do to continue to get that momentum going, build upon that, and make sure that we bring the support systems in that our staff so, so desperately needs to have. And quite frankly, I don't think we did a very good job as a district in the past really providing enough support systems. I don't know if it's just a lack of money, lack of strategy, but it's important now that we make sure that we get the resources out, that our teachers need to do what they do best, and that's teach. So, those are just a couple of highlights. I won't go over everything with you. I'll save a few things, and I'll add a few things on the twenty-first to my presentation that I was going to share with you tonight. But those are the most important things that I want you to know that's happening out there. It's good things that are happening out there for kids and for families, so thank you.
Thanks. And you will be looking into a meeting in a week to cover the issues that we...
We will be on that tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, meeting adjourned.
Oh, go ahead and go ask her about anything.